Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the Tuesday, June 24th, City Council meeting, Morro Bay Veterans Hall. We'll begin by a moment of silence, and I just want to take this opportunity to reflect very briefly on a community member who just recently passed, Lena Thomas. Just a very kind and gentle soul, and she's owned the Coles bookstore for over 50 years. Thank you. And with that, if I can ask Sergeant Taylor, who told me how much she likes leading the Pledge of Allegiance, to do that this evening? Thank you, Nicole, and thank you for your service in the military also. With that, we will move into reports, closed session report. Mr. Schultz.
Yes, good evening. Before tonight's regular meeting, the council met in closed session, discussed three items. The first two items were conference with real property negotiator. The first property discussed was 160, 180, Atascadero Road and 1700 Embarcadero, and the other property discussed was 1130, 1330, Napa Avenue. For these two property negotiations, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act. The other item discussed in closed session was the city manager's performance, discipline, dismissal, release. The council took action in closed session that requires reporting under the Brown Act. The city council, by a vote of 3-2, Mayor Wicksum and Councilmember Echols voting no, to dismiss, release the city manager from the employment with the city.
With that, we will move on to Councilmember Mayor Reports, announcements, and presentations. I'm going to kick off. I have a long laundry list. I had the opportunity as the Morro Bay representative at Slocog to do a ribbon cutting out in the middle of, be thankful you live here, when it's 100 degrees out at the 4146 overpass, known as the Y Junction. The improvement project out there is moving on, and Caltrans just opened that a week ago Thursday, and this overpass will provide enhancement to safety, mobility, and reliability for all users. So this is a really good thing and a long time coming. I also attended 3CE meeting. I want to remind everyone that 3CE, the same as PG&E, has a CARES program and offer discount at 30 to 35% on your utility bill if you qualify. You can call 211 for information on agencies that offer other help paying for bills, or 211.org. So if you are interested, there's a flyer out on the front that gives information on the 3CE discount program. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with Congressman Carbajal, who was in the district and visiting Morro Bay Coast Guard. I was there with the city manager and the harbor director, and we had an opportunity to walk out onto the North Deep Pier and continue conversations, looking for funding for the improvements and repairs to the North Deep Pier. I appreciate the work that our harbor director has done in working with partners at the Coast Guard and in Washington, DC. So hopefully, we're getting somewhere with that. I feel much better. We had a WORF Water Reclamation Facility Subcommittee meeting and discussed the decommissioning, and some of those activities will be on tonight's agenda. I attended Visit Slocow meeting, the tourism bureau that Morro Bay, Visit Morro Bay is a part of, and there was a lot of discussion about Highway 1, obviously, and then gearing up for the 2028 Olympics in Los Angeles and the impact that that will have for the whole Central Coast. I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I want to take an opportunity to thank Commissioner Asia King for her service on the Planning Commission. She resigned last week, as she and her family are moving over to La Sosa, so she would no longer be able to fill that seat. So encouraging anyone who's interested in applying. The city clerk just put that up, that there is an opening on our Planning Commission. At that meeting, there was a discussion on the new lighting on the Embarcadero. That discussion was picked up from the Harbor Advisory Board, and PG&E will be replacing lighting and working on the poles, and it will all be done to the standards that fit the requirements for navigation and our sea life. I attended Project Surf Camp fundraiser last week. Project Surf Camp is ongoing over the next few weeks down there. If you haven't had an opportunity to go down and volunteer, please consider doing that. It's a great cause. Last week, I had the mayor's meeting in Paso. There was a representative from Congressman Panetta's office there, and they were discussing the Medicare reimbursements and federal updates on a Medicare stabilization bill, and also they are opening a VA clinic in Paso, so you won't have to drive down to Santa Maria or down south anymore. There was one other update from the Assembly that was AB 1008, which is a bill moving forward that will allow 10 additional type 47 liquor license in the Slocow area over the next two years, and those applications will be going out. It should continue moving through. Tomorrow and Friday, we will be holding interviews for in-house city attorney, so stay tuned as we move through that. And 4th of July, Family Fun Day is coming up, skateboard race at 10:00, bike parade at 11:00, 12 o'clock's flag ceremony, and 1 to 4 is music and games down at Tydland's Park. And with that, I will go to my left, Councilmember Echols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be brief tonight because we have a full agenda. So I have been thinking a lot about some of the comments that I've heard over the last six weeks or so, over the last two months, from folks at the podium, some of the emails that I've received, and some of frankly, the conversations that I've had from people, and I wanted to address that. This is really something that I, from my heart, that I wrote out earlier in the week to share with you. I know there are some people in Morro Bay who don't trust some of the decisions of this council, and frankly, who don't trust me personally. I hear that, and I understand that. And I want you to know, I'm not here to dismiss those concerns. I'm here to serve you as well. Morro Bay belongs to all of us. We may come from different political places or different ideologies, but we all share something more important than our differences, a deep love for our community and a desire to see it thrive and be healthy. Of course, we have our disagreements, but I believe disagreement is not a weakness. It's part of what makes democracy work. But we get to choose how we move through it. We can either lean into division and spite and negativity, or we can lean into each other with positivity and good faith. Part of that means stepping away from the vitriol, the personal attacks, the labeling that can shut down dialogue and make it harder for all of us to come together. We can disagree without being disagreeable. I choose the latter. I've heard some comments about sides, taking sides, and who is being listened to more than not, which side is being listened to more than not. As your council member and as your public servant, I can assure you of this, I don't see myself as representing any particular side within this city. I represent the entire community, all of you. And that means listening with humility, showing up with respect, and always remembering that the people we disagree with are still our neighbors. Folks, our community is family. It's natural that we'll disagree on things, but at the end of the day, we're stuck with each other. It's a small town. We're still family. So let's extend as much love and grace as we can to each other. That said, I invite you to engage in genuine, respectful, and honest dialogue. We can work through the tough issues together, because a community that has good-faith conversations can find a way forward. A community that respects each other can find a way forward. At the end of the day, I believe a rising tide lifts all boats, and if we want that tide to come in for our families, our businesses, our environment, and our future, we have to rise together. That's the kind of leadership that I believe in. That's the kind of Morro Bay I believe in, and that I'll continue to work for. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt.
Thank you, Councilmember Echols. I appreciate that. I went to the IWMA, which is the Integrated Waste Management Agency Committee meeting. So I wanted to let you know, be on the lookout for four new commercial spots that are educational spots on recycling, everything from the organic waste to plastics and other materials. I was surprised at some of the stuff I knew and some of the stuff I didn't know. They're actually really tongue-in-cheek and fun and representative of all the different ages we have in our communities. So you can look for 35-second segments, as well as 1 minute and 35-second segments on KSBY, and those will be going out soon. Also, I would recommend the social media, following them on Instagram, which is recycle underscore slow county. If you want to see some of those little questions, Q&amp;As that they do on there, it's actually pretty interactive and fun. I also wanted to mention and say thank you to the Citizens Finance Committee, and staff as well. On last Tuesday, we had a special meeting that was a continuation of the review on revenue opportunities. I found this ironically very interesting, because as they were going into some of their items, one of them was events. And if anybody knows me, for the years that I've been here, the Abo Margarita Festival was one of the events that brought in between 10,000 and 12,000 people one weekend out of the month. And I think the focus of this revenue committee was one-day events, of which we ended up cutting that event down to. And consequently, we have new events for families and things happening all the time. But what I found interesting was, when we did that survey through the city, events was mentioned as being one of our priorities. Unfortunately, didn't get to be a part of our goals under economic vitality, but it does, I guess, I think deserves some more discussion and some more looking at, I think, after the conversation discussion that I saw at CFAC. You know, they are a great way to bring in, you know, people to stay in our hotels, dine at our restaurants, shop at our retailers, and our RV parks often fill up as well. So it's something to think about. It might be an opportunity to look at, if we did decide to, pilot parking. That could be an opportunity to do it at some point. Anyway, just throwing these thoughts out there for you, all the public. One other item that was mentioned, lastly, was the amount of revenue that our gas stations bring in. And you may not remember this, or you might, if you watch our meetings, but I mentioned a kiosk that's located at the mobile gas station. It's a kiosk that is available to the city to use in terms of allowing for visitor services, let people know where things are and how to get to them, or numbers to call, et cetera. And we really have not leveraged that piece of land, if you will, over there at that mobile gas station. So I thought, you know what? If we're looking at possibly leveraging the gas stations and what they supply to us in terms of revenue, there's one key piece that might be able, we might be able to fold into this as well. So be looking to hear more about revenue streams. Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum.
Good evening. I went, attended to many of the meetings that have been mentioned, as well as the Morro, Friends of Morro Elementary held a public meeting where they had their land use attorney and their historical consultants that are helping them designate, have the property designated federally into the Federal Register, Historical Register. And it was really interesting to hear the historical consultants talk about their early evaluations with the 1930s and the 1954 buildings, and they were both done using New Deal funding, and both of the architects that designed them were published in architectural magazines. They were both really notable architects. They've retrained their, retained their integrity without much alteration. It's interesting to know that if the buildings are deemed historic, the cost of renovations goes down, and they, the attorney had a path that we, if the city purchased the property, they could do that with like, debt neutral, in a way that was debt neutral. And another thing that I found interesting was that that, the original building, the Spanish-style building, was built in the 1930s during the Great Depression, when it was really, you know, a struggle for people. And the community, the tiny community of Morro Bay, decided that it was so important to them to have a school there, and not just any school, a really, you know, beautiful, well-made for the time, and actually, for today's standards, school. So they, you know, they all came together during that difficult time in history and pooled their resources and their desires and got that built. And people came from all over the state to see it, because it was such a big deal. And I just thought it would be a shame to 100, nearly 100 years later, let something happen to that building. So I just think it's really important that we try to preserve it. And that's all.
Councilmember Lepay.
Yes, good evening. I also attended the CFAC meeting, and they discussed revenue ideas that the city should consider pursuing. And I also attended the Planning Commission meeting, which was about the light fixtures and stuff like that. And then this Saturday, we do have the Marine Swap Meet, finally. It's 8 o'clock to 1 o'clock in the Maritime Museum parking lot at the Triangle Lot. I'll be there at 5:30 in the morning, checking in the vendors. So come on out. It's free, and you might want a kayak, a surfboard, fishing rods, anything marine-related, we're going to have it for you. So thank you.
Subcommittee reports. Mr. Colick.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The WORF Subcommittee did meet last week, where we discussed items related to the decommissioning and demolition of the old wastewater treatment plant. We did a high-level review of some of the items that are before you tonight with regards to the recycled water program and the updates there. And we also discussed some strategies with CSD negotiations for the jointly-owned properties.
Thank you, Mr. Colick. Mr. Singwall.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Airloan Singwall, Community Development Director. So in addition to Councilmember Landrum's comments during Councilmember reports, I will just add, regarding the Morro Elementary Subcommittee, that the Subcommittee met last Wednesday, June 18th, to hear a presentation from a municipal bond advisor called Urban Futures, is the name of the company. And the advisor gave a presentation on various possible finance options if the city were to pursue making an offer and financing a purchase of the Morro Elementary School property.
Thank you, Mr. Singwall. With that, we'll move on to recognitions and recognition and presentations. I have two proclamations this evening. The first one is for our Park and Rec Department. Proclamation of the City Council, the City of Morro Bay declaring July 25th as Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activities. And whereas Park and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' engagement. Whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events and beyond. Whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in the communities by celebrating diversity, providing space to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equality, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. Whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. Whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation Facilities, community problem and issue, try that again, facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and serving as key points of service, helping our communities heal both physically and emotionally. Whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. Whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. Whereas Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by the governing agencies. Whereas California Park and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs, and services. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Morro Bay recognizes the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space, and facilities for the health, wellness, development, inspiration, and safety of all residents, and declares July 25th, July 2025, as Parks Make Life Better Month. And I believe Ann Hellicka is here this evening. Go ahead.
Yeah, good try. I didn't have anything prepared. I found out this morning that I was coming. But I just, on behalf of Morro Bay Recreation, we say thank you so much for all your support always, and just giving us the opportunity to continue offering these programs for the community, and hope to see everyone on 4th of July at Tydland's Park. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ann Hellicka. The second proclamation this evening is of the City of Morro Bay recognizing the 30th anniversary of the Morro Bay National Estuary Program. Whereas because of the large number of species which rely on Morro Bay and the strong support of local leaders, in 1994, California Governor Pete Wilson signed legislation naming Morro Bay the first state estuary. And whereas, July 6, 1995, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency announced that it had chosen the Morro Bay watershed for inclusion in the U.S. EPA's National Estuary Program, which was established by Congress in 1987, amendments to the Clean Water Act. Whereas the Clean Water Act requires each national estuary program to develop and implement a cohesive conservation and management plan defining the priority issues facing the health of the Morro Bay estuary and watershed, and present action plans to effectively address those issues. Whereas through the National Estuary Program, the U.S. EPA focuses on the resources of state, local, and federal agencies on planning coordinated conservation measures to protect these fragile, highly productive coastal ecosystems. Whereas the Morro Bay National Estuary Program works to protect and restore Morro Bay and its watershed by conducting monitoring and research to track the health of the estuary, repairing natural habitats to protect water quality and wildlife, and educating residents and visitors on how to be good stewards of the bay. Whereas the Morro Bay Estuary is a national and state treasure, a vital ecological resource whose health affects our health and vibrancy in our community and economy. Whereas the Morro Bay National Estuary Program brings together the community, local governments, nonprofits, agencies, landowners to protect and restore the Morro Bay estuary and lands that surround it. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Morro Bay, does hereby celebrate Morro Bay National Estuary Program for 30 years of protecting and restoring Morro Bay's estuary. Melanie, if I can invite you up. Thank you.
Wanted to say thank you to the City of Morro Bay. You've been longstanding partners in our 30 years here, and honored to accept this for our great team, our past directors, our board of directors, our executive committee members, which is our ASON. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for the estuary. With that, we will move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. I have two speaker slips to start with. After that, please follow Linda Winters, followed by Kirian.
I am Linda Winters, 31-year resident here in the Haymobile Home Park here in Morro I'm here to talk about several things, but first, let me wish all of you guys Happy Father's Day. I know I missed it. I know all of you may not be fathers, but I know all of you have had fathers, so you all qualify. Secondly, I want to say thanks to the city for allowing the Monday night dinners to be able to be here at the Vets Hall. We just had our 555th dinner, and still working strong. And why is that, that particular Monday night dinner so important to the City of Morro Bay and the residents that are here? We serve, we have the food bank that comes in, and there's a lot of food insecurity around here, so they're able to procure somewhere between 40 and 50 pounds of food every single Monday night. And we also have a clothing and toiletry display here for anybody who needs it, and then we serve a hot meal. And it's all very well-attended. Last night, we had 78 people that came through the door. So, and we're doing that on a continuous basis. And speaking of food insecurity, the last city council meeting, we had Andrea Keesley here from the food bank, and she tells us how vitally important it is for all of these food banks to be able to continue to help the people, not only here in Morro Bay, but all of San Luis County. It's vitally important. We were talking about all kinds of things that I have attended. Project Surf Camp, I found out that they were having a fundraiser, and two of the people that initiated this program, I used to work with at the Morro Bay Natural History Museum, Bill and Jenny Taylor, and they were the ones who created Project Surf Camp. And then I also attended that fundraiser for them, and here at Parks and Recs, they got a wonderful recognition. I also used to work with Parks and Recs for Kids Camp. I've been around a lot. The Natural Estuary Program, we worked with them down in the very beginning at the Morro Bay Natural History Museum. There's nothing more delightful to take a kid down to the estuary and show them what lives there and how it all evolves. It's a natural food chain, and the wonderment in their eyes is to behold. I'm done. Thank you.
Your role is to ensure the well-being of your constituency, our neighbors, all of them. Now, I don't know if you remember, some of you were not here for that, but you may be aware of this anyway, when I was up here playing a recording that I'd made of one of our so-called public servants claiming that police, as individuals, have the right to decide when to enforce the law and who gets to be a member of our community. I suspect you do remember this, as you have seen fit to celebrate the promotion of an individual that I specifically warned you had a higher authority than due individual that I specifically warned you had a higher authority than due process, that of the phrase, "There is no truth in their mouth." You've also developed the habit of name dropping one of our most outspokenly techno-fascist local businesses. If you want to champion unity, here's a phrase. El pueblo unido jamás será vencido. The people united will never be divided.
Anyone else for general public comment? Items not on the agenda, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Margaret Carmen, and I want to say thank you, thank you so much for the estuary program for 30 years, because it's just amazing to live here with our estuary, and with all the things we heard in the proclamation, highly sensitive ecosystems, repair the habitat, good stewards of the bay. I just want to give them a personal invitation to please come and join us at React Alliance, because industrialization of the ocean will cause quite a, let's just say, destruction to the estuary. So I would love to have them there, and I'd love to figure out how we cannot have glyphosate sprayed on the things around the estuary. Thank you.
Anyone else for general public comment on items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close general public comment and bring it back to council. Um, thank you again to, uh, the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, and to the National Estuary Program. We appreciate you. Well, we'll open public comment on items on the consent agenda. Before we begin that, I'm going to make one correction that was just brought to me from the Public Works Director on Item 7F. Item 7F is a discussion on transferring monies from the Transit Operating Fund to the Paving Management Fund. It was listed at a $400,000 transfer with $88,000 transferring to, um, RTA. The correction is that the entire $488,000 will transfer to paving. With that, public comment is open on items on the consent agenda.
Betty Winholz, thank you, and I'm glad to hear that we'll get the $488,000 for our streets, and thank you so much for the good paving, and finally, the striping's done. It's just so nice to drive around town right now, and I can't wait till the next section next year. Um, with regard to 7H, um, which is about the, uh, I guess the IPR, the WRF, whatever you want to call, uh, that project now, um, I just want to make note that this appears to be an unending project. It was started 10 years ago, some things were started a couple of years ago, and yet deadlines keep moving out. And, and along with that is this term that's used, it's called "not to exceed," and it's with the contracts that you're being asked to approve tonight. And I, I just want to acknowledge that that is such a misnomer, because every time we say it's not going to exceed, then they come back with another amendment, you know, 12 months later, and then there's a new or higher amount. So I just, I just get frustrated with that and want to share my frustration. Um, I am asking you to not approve the final EIR. I believe it's inappropriate, um, because they are, uh, looking at areas like Surf Street, the Embarcadero places that have not been examined in the original EIR, and I think it's inappropriate to do just an amendment. I think they need to go back and look at those particular areas and, and do a full environmental review as they have with the other areas. Um, I think the, I, and then I, I made other comment to you regarding the tracer and that the, they have increased the number of wells that they want to dig. I'm not sure those are necessary. I think go with the first couple and see how that goes, and see if you really need to go beyond that. And then quickly, I want to move to, um, 7I, um, which is about the, uh, decommissioning and demolition, um, of the old, now old sewer plant. And there was no mention in there about Cayucus's role, and so I'm curious if someone would make comment about that. Are we financing this on our own, or are they part of this? Um, and then, um, I think, but, and then I just noted that Cannon is a part of this new contract, and we had them working under the WRF. And my question was, how many change orders were they responsible for when we're doing the WRF? Will there be more change orders, or are they one of the good guys that didn't do so much of that? And so those are my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull anything? To my left. Yes, no? To my right.
Um, I would like to pull 7H and I.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the other consent agenda items.
Don't move.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? I. Opposed? 7H, Mr. Qualick. Oh, here he comes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. So we do have some slides prepared for 7H. I, I won't go through them unless, uh, requested, so happy to take any questions on, on the item.
Councilmember Landrum?
Oh, sorry. Um, what did, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Your questions?
Oh, my questions. I'm looking for them right now. Um, you, you probably have them. Um, let's see. I think they got lost. 7H, um, I just would, I, I thought it would be nice to let the public know the questions I had, and maybe, and, and also if you could answer the questions that have come up tonight, if you were paying attention to that.
Yes, thank you. So why don't I address that first? There were a couple of, uh, questions raised. One was about the "not to exceed" term being a misnomer. That's not true. So there are two types of contracts for professional services agreement. One is called a lump sum, and one is called a "not to exceed." Um, another term for "not to exceed" contracts is time and materials. So that is a kind of contract where a consultant is performing professional services for the city, and the city monitors, uh, their work in progress, and they can only charge the city time and materials. Um, that is different from a lump sum contract where, uh, let's say a consultant says, hey, I can do that job for you for $100,000. That's a lump sum that they are then entitled to receive, whether or not it costs them $50,000 to do the work, or $150,000, they will get $100,000. The "not to exceed" is, i- if, if a consultant, uh, said, uh, you know, we think it's going to cost $100,000, and it only costs 50, uh, then they're only going to get paid 50. Now, there was another question about the CSD role in, well, that's, I guess, a separate item, so I'll hold that. Cannon as being a sub, I heard that question come up, and, um, how many change orders they've had on this project? The answer is zero. And then I will open up your questions, Councilmember Landrum, for my email, if you give me a moment.
And sorry, I, I don't know what, what happened to them. I can't find them in here. Okay, I did find them. So I was asking you, well, I, I was asking you about the original estimates, and I don't know how, do you have that, that attachment, or?
The original estimate for the decommissioning and demo?
No, this is 7H, right?
Oh, for the, uh, for the contracts.
Yes.
So for that, um, and I, I interpret that to mean the original contract amount, that that's not necessarily the same thing as an initial estimate.
Yeah, just, yeah. Are we within the ballpark of what was originally expected for this portion of the?
I would say broadly speaking, we are within the project budget for recycled water, yes. Uh, the city has approximately $13 million still on spent as part of that $159.8 million budget that was approved, I believe, in fiscal year budget 2223. Uh, and so we are on track there. We also have $10.5 million of grant funding, uh, for the recycled water project.
Okay, and I, I just meant more directly, for this portion, is this, how far off roughly are we, or are we close to being what was originally anticipated?
I don't have an answer to that question in front of me, but, um, I can say that we have been very cautious in how we approach this design portion of the project. We want to make sure that when we take on the expense of drilling the injection wells, that we are sure that they are in the right location, and that, uh, we are sure that they will be in compliance with the Division of Drinking Waters rules on travel time. And so that does mean some additional upfront cost. Uh, I believe I sent, um, uh, number Landrum, you, a quote of around $60,000 to ensure that. Uh, the consequence if we don't take that extra step is we could drill a well for a couple million dollars, and then we're not able to use it, and we want to avoid that. Uh, and so that, that is why we are, um, adding on some tasks for consultants, so that we are sure that when we, we drill a well, that it's in the right place.
Okay, um, and, okay, I'll, that's good. That's good. Thank you. Okay, let me get to that without closing this.
And maybe I'll just start. There, there was a question about the CSD role, and I believe Councilmember Landrum asked me to address that too, so that, that one is for 7I. Uh, CSD has been invited to participate in the procurement process for this consultant selection several times. They have declined, um, and so I can tell you that as per the current joint powers agreement, uh, they are responsible for some of the costs of jointly owned infrastructure, and, uh, that sits on jointly owned land. And so the historical process for that is that the city, on behalf of the JPA, performs work, and then we send, um, CSD an invoice for a percentage of that work. And so the city intends to do that for this project unless directed otherwise.
Okay, and then I had a question as to, I have been told that, um, since the company that's chosen to do this is from out of state, um, there is some requirement apparently that the engineer, or an engineer that works for the firm, firm, not, not the, a subcontractor needs to have, um, a California engineering license? Is, is there, do you know anything about that?
Yes, my understanding is that that's correct, and, uh, they have a, uh, Michael Whelan, um, who is registered, he's, he's the engineer of record, and is a registered civil engineer in the state of California.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on these items?
Yeah, if, I'm sorry, Mr. Qualick, if I may go back to, um, H, I think there was a question asked with regard to, um, the number of injection wells, the increase in that, if you could explain it, because it was a little confusing. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. Uh, it, it is a little confusing, because we still don't know the answer. We would like to, so we already have one injection well in the ground, and we would like to only drill two more. Uh, that said, we are accountable to the State Revolving Fund loan program to meet within five years of, um, project completion, uh, a 412 and a half acre feet per year injection rate. And if it is determined that we are unable to do that with three wells total, uh, we won't have any choice but to do an additional one. And, um, this is a, a very sensitive topic, and, because every extra well we drill is going to add an expense. And so the project team fully understands that we want to avoid that at all costs, and we're doing everything we can to minimize the chance that we have to drill a fourth well. Our goal is to have three.
Thank you. It was my question too. I appreciate that.
Can I follow that question up, Mr. Qualick? So if it's, if it's deemed that it's infeasible and this doesn't work, can you explain the process and, and how we, when we get to that point, how we will know if we get to that point?
Thank you for the question, and, um, yes, this is an area of interest of mine. If the tracer study tests, and we're getting a little technical here, but if the tracer study testing reveals that for some reason the wells will not meet travel time requirements by the state, then the city will have evidence that that project is not feasible in the Morro Basin. And if that were to occur, we would approach our lender and tell them that this project isn't what we thought it was going to be, and we would proceed with negotiations on options with that. Currently, we don't have evidence of that, and in fact, we have evidence from injection well one that the, that the test was that we did meet travel times. Now that said, uh, at least one of the additional wells, uh, will not be in that same location. So there is a possibility, um, based on some factors, um, in, in the hydrogeology of that basin, that suggests that the travel times might be faster, uh, in other areas. And so that is why we want to do these additional tracer tests to see if we find evidence that it will either work or it won't.
So all we're required to do is four wells, and, and if it doesn't work, then we're done, or do we have to keep, I mean, is there any rea, like, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, why don't we do the one that's the least likely to work, and if that doesn't work, could we stop at that point, or, um, do you know what I'm saying? If, if it's not going to work, otherwise, we're just drilling for, until we find one that works? And so I, I'm, I just wanted some clarity to that.
Thank you for the question. Uh, I, I think there's a, I mean, we, we have a standard of making a good faith effort here to complete a project that, that the city has put in, in ink that we would do. And we have identified eight well locations total that are potential in that basin to be able to meet the 412 and a half acre feet per year requirement by our, our lender. And so, uh, we, we do have an option of just going ahead and checking all of them right now. Um, I, I actually shot that down, because, um, we, my, my idea, and, and the project team's idea, is that if we take a more incremental approach, we may save money. Uh, we probably don't need to check all eight wells. Uh, and so, uh, we currently don't have evidence that this isn't going to work. I know there are some suspicions out there that it might not. Um, our current evidence shows that we can put water into that groundwater basin, and it will fill that basin, and that will provide us with supplemental water supply during drought years. And so, um, I mean, just to, to answer your question, I, I don't, I don't think there's a way that we can kind of, you know, game it so that we, it, it appears as though it doesn't work. I, I think the state would see through that.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I, I'm saying that if there's one that's not likely to work, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we start with that one? And then the other question is if there's eight that have been identified, are all the eight of those on Morro Bay's property?
I'm looking at Mr. Heimel, is, are, are all eight of the injection wells, uh, the locations on Morro Bay property, or easements?
Not all eight.
So we are proceeding with ones that we, we do have. Our, um, thank you, so, and I'll just repeat that, because it didn't make it into the microphone, but the ones that we are prioritizing now are either on our property, or we do have easements. And, um, some of them are, are, some of the closest to the extraction well that we're using as part of the test, to Councilmember Landrum, your point, um, those would be the ones that, that one might surmise because of the travel time requirement, that it would, they would get to the extraction well most quickly. So we, we actually are testing those that are most likely to not succeed.
And in the good faith effort, is, does that include property that is not owned by the city? I mean, at some point, I, I mean, I, I just wonder if that is included in the good faith effort, other people's property? other people's property?
Trying to think of how to answer to that. I think, I think our next move is to see what happens with these next tests. And if for some reason they all fail, then we have some work to do as a, as a, as a project team, city staff, and PWAAB and the city council on what our next move is. In my view, if they all fail for some reason, it is not an automatic that we just start jumping to the next ones. I think at that point, we would need to huddle up and have a look at how feasible are these other locations? If they're not on our property, you know, what is the likelihood that they would succeed? Do we go to the state now, or do we try another test? So I would commit to that, that if these locations don't work, we will have a review of what to do next. That will include the subcommittee, the PWAAB, and the city council.
Well, and if these next ones don't work, that's four that are, that are on, well, there's, there's possibly four, right? That are on either easements that Morro Bay owns or Morro Bay's property. And then if we, if we veer off of that, that entails a much more expensive project, right?
It could.
And that, and that's where we get to the good faith part, the question of good faith, and what is and isn't good faith, and.
There's a gray line there somewhere. I would agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions on these two items? Thank you.
Just, just one question. You know, I tried to read this thing, and to be honest with you, this thing is just so far over my head. Where does the water come from that goes into the, the test wells to be injected in the ground? Is that coming from this wastewater sewer plant?
Thank you for the question. No, that is coming from our state water supply.
If there's no further questions, motion, please.
Motion to approve seven H and I.
Do you think we could do them separately?
Yes. Motion for seven H.
I, I'll second that, or I move that we, I'll let someone else do that.
Separate motions. Go ahead.
Motion to approve seven H.
Do I have a, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye. No, I oppose it.
And then seven I.
I move that we approve item seven, aye.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Pollock. It is very convoluted and very difficult to follow.
No, I mean.
Chase the water, chase the money. Public hearing item eight A. I will open the public hearing item, and this will be Public Works Department. Mr. Pollock has issued adoption resolution for directing levy to annual assessment of the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District.
I apologize, Mayor. These have become so routine that I forgot all about it. So yes, this is a public hearing that comes once a year and is the third step to, and final step for the city council to levy an assessment on the Cloisters Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District. It's approximately $144,000. I don't have the paper in front of me. I left my laptop over there. But the city in April passed a resolution to request an engineer's report to look at costs amongst other things and scope of what it takes to provide maintenance services to that district. In May, the city came back with an engineer's report that detailed all that, and both of those were passed by the city council. And now the final step is simply to levy the assessment as, as we've done every year, I believe, for the past 29 years or so. So I'd be happy to conclude my presentation there and take questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Pollock. With that, public comment is open on eight A. I do have one speaker slip from Don Beatty.
My name is Don Beatty, and it's Morro Bay. I think it's important to note that the cloisters park and open space are public. That's right. They're not owned by the homeowners. They are owned by the city of Morro Bay. The parking lot by the park is often filled with cars, even buses, with kids coming in. If you live in the closters, you're not going to drive to the park, more than likely. So, as many of you have heard me say year after year, there are many concessions that the cloister developer needed to, to see to, I guess, to have the city agree to approving the development or allow to give building permit. One of them was to create a special assessment district. We've discussed it tonight. That was to pay for the maintenance of the public park and open space, the city-owned property. Now, the issue of not having an agreed-upon annual increase comes up year after year. My opinion, which differs from that, from our interim city attorney, who, by the way, was here years ago when this got fought about, my opinion is that the assessment was to be taken over by another entity. The legal paperwork I read said until such time as, until such time as, something else would take it over. Something like that. So I don't know what that something else is, but I can tell the money spent in the closters, the city makes decisions on how the money is spent. Vast majority of that money is spent on the park, that's the greenery, what gets mowed and watered, and, and sometimes the pavement, the walking trails and whatnot, but most likely the park. And if you live in the closters, that may not be the thing that you think is the most valuable part of the non-lots that our homes are built on. That's the only thing the homeowners own, is lots that the homes are built on. Everything else is owned by the city. So I just, I think it's important, I want to put on record once again, that there is no annual increase, because it was never intended to go on in perpetuity, in my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Betty Winholtz, I do not live at the Cloisters, but I do use the park, and I appreciate that. And I'm very fortunate that the developer was able to build the houses and yet provide for our access to that area. In light of that, when this assessment was done more than 30 years ago, as was alluded to, that cost has never increased. And rather than assume that the homeowners who would have to participate in a Prop 218 vote should, would automatically turn it down, I think it's worth trying that vote. And I would hope that the council would direct staff to come forward, not, apparently not this year, it's too late, but next year, and ask for a Prop 18 vote to see if we can get that cost increased, at least a standard, if not a CPI. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this hearing item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council and close the public hearing item. Are there any questions or comments?
So, the question being is that, so in the, in the ordinance, there is no provision to raise the rates. It's been a flat rate for 30 years. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
So, okay.
So, Mr. Pollock, is there a certain time that you anticipate that there wouldn't, you would want to ask that? Because, I mean, clearly, it can't, I mean, you, one wouldn't think it could go on forever. Is there a time that you have thought that it would be a good idea to try to tackle that one?
Thank you for the question. It depends on process. Our previous city attorney believed that, and I'll let Mr. Schultz speak on his opinion, but our previous city attorney has long stated that any sort of increase would require a Prop 218, which would be subject to a protest of the, of the assessment payers there, which would mean that 50% plus one would, would end the assessment if, if they protested against it. So that there, from that theory, there is some risk to taking that on. Also, a previous city council from 20 years ago or so does have a, a motion that was passed that would say that any additional costs for the maintenance activities at that park would be covered by the general fund. And so the city has been operating under that model ever since, and under the thought that, you know, there's some risk on trying to touch that assessment. So just leave it as is.
And if it's not taking, if that motion didn't exist, then what would happen?
Arguably, what would happen, and I know other cities do this, where if an assessment either doesn't exist in a landscape maintenance district, or if it's insufficient, the city would just not provide the service. So for example, we would work up to the 144 or so thousand dollars and then stop. And weeds would be overgrown, and the restrooms wouldn't be taken care of. And I don't know that anybody wants that. Certainly not a decision I would make without city council's direction.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? With that, I'll move approval of eight A and ask for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight B. This is another public hearing item, adoption resolution 3725, directing the levy of annual assessment of the North Point Natural Area Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. Mr. Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Parallel item, we have step three out of three steps, so this is the final step. We came to the city council with a resolution on, city council meeting in April, to bring back an engineer's report in May, which the city did, both of those items. The council approved unanimously. Now we have the third step to approve the levy, and that is what enables the city to collect the assessment. It's approximately $5,600. Again, I don't have the number in front of me. I apologize. There, there are 10 homeowners that, that pay into this. And with that money, the city does not maintain the road. The road is privately owned on Toro Lane, but the parking lots and the open space area just above it. So happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. Questions for Mr. Pollock? It's a public hearing item. Public comment is open on this item.
Betty Winholtz, I do like our open spaces. I think in addition to the parking lot and the open space, I believe the city also maintains the streetlights and the, across the street from where the vegetation is. Probably Mr. Mendoza would know. My point here is, again, we may be at that point where we're over the spending, how much, and, but that now is probably not the time to ask those homeowners to do a 218 vote, since they're kind of in lawsuit over the bike connector. But it does raise also the point for me that was brought up on Nextdoor, actually, in May, where the natural flowers were cut down in the natural area. And I, I need to know from the council if they're going to insist that our natural areas be maintained as natural. Are there ways to keep that from happening again? I, it's, it's an affront to those of us who use that area for it to be beautiful one day and to come in the next in its mode, which is so inappropriate for an open space. So I just need some kind of assurance that that's been understood and that that won't happen again, or it will happen again. I think the public has a right to know, and it's not just me, but other people that use that area. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on this public hearing item and bring it back to council. Mr. Pollock, any response to that?
Thank you for the opportunity to respond, Mayor. I actually went up there today with Maintenance Division Manager Mendoza to have a look at the situation, based on the comment that we did receive. And so what, what the city does is, we'd whack down a fire break area of, I would say, 15 or 20 feet. I'm just doing my own measurement from sight there, so that, just as a, as a fire mitigation measure, you do have people parking there and smoking cigarettes and things, and flicking them out of their car. And so there is an entire open space area there that we don't ever touch. And that's just naturally growing mustard, fennel, some coyote brush, and some daisies there that we, we don't touch. And that is the vast majority of that, of that area. All we do is mow down that, that fire break area.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. Any questions or comments from council?
I think that, you know, the, the comments being heard tonight are, you know, just enough to remind, remind staff to keep it to the minimum that's needed.
Thank you. With that, I'll move approval of item eight B and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I want to take a really quick moment. I should have acknowledged all of our fine police officers that have joined us this evening from Morro Bay PD out there in the audience. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. You make us feel safe all the time. With that, we're going to move into the budget. Before we do that, we're going to take a five minute. We're going to continue our meeting, move on to nine A. We'll be discussing the budget, fiscal year 2526, operating and capitals budget, new classification, salary schedules, management salary and benefits, investment policy, and fiscal year 2526, again appropriations limit. And with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Emily Conrad.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'll launch right into our presentation this evening. So we are looking at the budget adoption. This is, I'm bringing to you the revised proposed fiscal year 2526 budget. We'll start with just a quick outline of what this very brief presentation will cover. We'll start with the review of the budget process, the requested or recommended actions for budget adoption. That will include revisiting just briefly the operating revenue by fund, the operating expenditures by fund and by department, and the capital project funding. And we'll end with the discussion and staff recommendations. So starting with the budget timeline, just like every other year, we do start with the presentation of the mid-year budget to the CFAC in February, followed by the same presentation to city council, including CFAC recommendations and feedback. In March, we open the budget development to departments so they can begin preparing their requests. In April, we sat with, the city manager sat with each director of the, a member of the executive team to review their budget requests. May 20th, we took this proposed budget to CFAC, the emphasis of their reviews on Measure QE. And May 28th, we held the budget study session or budget workshop. And here we are today with, June 24th, with budget adoption. So there are six actions before you this evening. One is to adopt the fiscal year 2526 operating and capital budget. This includes new job classifications and one new position, one new FTE of the Utilities Project Manager. So those job classifications would need to come to you for adoption. Because we have new job classifications, we needed to amend our salary schedule, so that's item three. And because one of the positions is on the management, we need to bring that compensation and benefits for unrepresented management for designated employees back to you. Every year, we have the housekeeping duties of re-adopting our city's investment policy and setting the 2526. and setting the 2526 or current year GAN appropriations limit. We will review those at the end of the presentation. So, citywide budget adoption, we do come to you with this because city council must provide the authority to collect and spend revenue and give the authority to carry forward the unspent capital improvement project budgets and complete transfers as required by adopted reserve policies. Taking a look at the numbers, for the purposes of this presentation, we'll use budget numbers that are net of transfers, because transfers represent the city moving money from one fund to another. Sometimes it's required by statute, policy, or best practice. Presenting the budget net of transfers gives you a more accurate depiction of the actual revenues and expenditures. So, the citywide revenue budget is 48.3 million net of transfers. As we previously have discussed, we have two fee studies currently underway for development impact fees and user fees, so we do anticipate that actual revenues will be greater than budgeted, in which case we will amend the budget at a later date, most likely at mid-year. Here we can see the breakdown of the nearly $50 million in citywide operating revenues by fund excluding interfund transfers to capital project budgets. We can see here the largest revenue generating fund is the general fund, followed by the utilities funds, water and sewer, Measure QE, and harbor. Looking at expenditures by fund, it follows the same pattern, nearly, may have the wrong note. So, it follows the same breakdown, so the greatest number, amount of expenditures is in the general fund, followed by the utilities funds, water, sewer, and Measure QE. I'm having technical difficulties. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. All right. Thanks, everyone. So, looking at the expenditure budget by department, it's the same dollars, but just displayed in a different way. Public Works has the largest amount. Of course, this is citywide, so it includes our utilities funds and our capital improvement projects, followed by non-departmental. That is a cost of about $5.2 million, or nearly 28% of the expenditure budget. So, to outline a little bit what this non-departmental segment includes, it has the $500,000 assumed vacancy savings, also costs associated with maintenance at the Triangle Boat Storage Lot. It includes interfund transfers. It includes the affordable housing fund expenditures, insurance costs such as workers' compensation and general liability, and the road maintenance and rehabilitation fund expenditures. The next department is police, followed by fire, and those are our largest departments' Looking at the capital projects one-year plan, this is a review that you've seen before. This budget proposes investing $13.9 million in critical infrastructure across 14 new projects. 13.8 is new investment, $150,000 is planned to come from the sewer fund balance to replace the crane truck. Additionally, any capital project budget that remains unspent at June 30 of this year will be carried forward per policy into fiscal year 2526. This proposed budget details, the proposed budget book details the CIP budget by funding source. It's comprised of funding from the water and sewer funds for sewer and water projects, general fund, Measure QE for broader citywide projects, and a variety of smaller restricted sources such as transit funds and gas tax funds. So, since we last looked at this budget, there's only been one change. City council directed no changes at the time of proposed budget presentation, but there were some other things that had to be completed, such as a decrease of $65,000 in the Economic Development Fund, the addition of forecasts for harbor, water, and sewer operating funds, corrections and completion of the fund balances summary, and other non-substantive completions, corrections, and updates, like typos that I found or using Measure QE consistently throughout So, I wanted to show you the impact of the $65,000 decrease in the Economic Development Fund. The proposed citywide expenditure budget went from $68.9 million to $68.8 million. Citywide operating, $55.1 to $55.07. And the Economic Development Fund expenditure budget decreased by $65,000 from $188,640 to $123,640. And the resulting ending fund balance, it proposed, it was listed as $647,000, and the revised proposed is $830,210. That's not only the change of $65,000, of course, that also is me refining the estimated ending fund balance for June 30 of this year. So, moving on to the second action item for tonight, the new job classifications. There were three proposed new classifications for Public Works. One is the new FTE Utilities Project Manager, the Collections and Pretreatment Operator, and the Water Resources Compliance Specialist. The Utilities Project Manager was included in the proposed budget. The other two positions are changes to only title and duties, not to pay scale, so there was nothing to reflect in the budget document. The Collections and Pretreatment Operator is a reclassification of the existing utility operator title and job description to more accurately reflect the incumbent's current responsibilities. Again, no change to FTE, no change to pay scale, no change to budget. The Water Resources Compliance Specialist is a replacement of one currently vacant lead in the utility operator position. This proposed change aims to improve operational efficiency and better meet the division's workload needs. Again, no change to FTE, no change to pay scale, and no change to budget. And because we have those new job classifications, we need to amend the salary schedules. These were adopted under one resolution, and so, we have updated 25, 26, 26, 27 to include the new job classifications and re-adopt altogether. The fourth item is the Management Salary and Benefits for 25, 26, and 27, and the action is to approve the updated compensation and benefits for unrepresented management designated employees to include the new utility projects manager position. Like we do every year, we need to re-adopt the city investment policy. An annual review is required by state law. I did that review, and no material changes are existing for this year, which is nice. Our policy is consistent with state law and industry best practice, outlines safety, liquidity, and yield as key objectives, identifies positions permitted to invest funds, staff positions, identifies internal controls and standards of care, and the allowable investment types, which is governed by state law and pretty limited, as we're being prudent with taxpayer dollars. All of these fiscal policies are on the city's website and referenced in the budget document. Our last action item is to adopt the GAN limit for this year. This is an annual process required by state law. The intent is to limit the appropriation of tax proceeds, to limit the growth of tax-funded programs. This is based on a 1979 base year limit. It was adjusted, I believe, in 1990, and adjusted annually for inflation. The 2526 GAN limit and projected tax revenues, the legal limit for tax that we can collect and spend is $37.7 million. This budget contains $18.3 million in tax revenues, and so, we find ourselves more than 51% below the appropriation limit and consistent with state law. And that concludes my brief presentation to you tonight, barring the pause for tech difficulties. So, our recommendations for you, which can be done in one fell swoop, is to adopt the resolution, excuse me for not updating the resume numbers, but they should be in the budget staff report, excuse me, in the staff report. Adopt the resolution to adopt the fiscal year operating and capital budgets, approve the new job classifications, the amended salary schedules, the compensation for unrepresented management designated employees, the city's investment policy, and the GAN appropriations limit. And that concludes my presentation and takes us to discussion.
Thank you, Director Conrad. Questions to my right?
On the Utilities Project Manager, I thought that was going to be funded through the Utilities Fund as opposed to the General Fund.
It is.
Okay. So, even benefits and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The full cost, 50% water, 50%...
Not going through the General Fund, then?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I'll wait.
My left. Councilmember Edwards? Number Eccles, questions? I'll open public comment on this item. I have two speaker slips, and public comment will be open after that to everyone else. Walter Heath and Jane Heath, please.
Good evening, council. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Jane Heath. I am a resident and business owner in Morro Bay. We live in an incorporated city. We enjoy the benefits of our own police, fire, utilities. We maintain and repair our own streets. We also have unique responsibility for our harbor. Those are the essentials of maintaining our incorporated status. We decide how to spend our money. Essential services must be paid for, or we will no longer be a city. As you consider this budget, I would ask council to prioritize our essential responsibilities. As an example, we must provide what our first responders need to do 21st century law enforcement and fire suppression. Before we consider allocating to any other purpose, there's a line item, as an example, there's a line item in this budget to upgrade the communications capabilities of the police department. This upgrade has been mandated since 2020, and it needs to be done. One feature of that upgrade is to mask personal information of crime victims and others who come in contact with officers. At a time when protecting individual privacy is increasingly difficult, this is an upgrade that directly benefits our citizens. It's an appropriate use of public funds, and I ask you to retain it in this budget. Thank you.
Walter Heath, President of Morro Bay. And so, the last time our police department's communication system was upgraded, updated, was 1985. So, I did a little research to see what developments in terms of voice communication have occurred since 1985. And by far, the leading innovation is digital technology, which is what we'd be moving toward. And the idea that the transmissions are more reliable, they're clearable, more clearer, more reliable, reduce background noise, and enhance functionality. And when you start to talk about enhanced functionality, especially with a cloud-based system that can talk between devices, it really enhances our police department's opportunity when they get calls to immediately go into computers and so forth and start to look up, you know, folks who have outstanding warrants, so forth and so on. So, it really is going to enhance their availability to information that can help them respond quicker and solve crimes quicker. So, I hope you'll consider that, you know, that I think it's time for an upgrade. I think it's time for an update.
Public comment is open?
Michelle Lester Catteray, Morro Bay resident. After hearing about the planned 1.5 million expenditure on police radio encryption several weeks back at a budget meeting, I ended up doing some research regarding our essential, this expense, how essential this expense was. What stood out to me is that as of a year ago, it appears that only 25% of California municipalities, 128 out of 484, have adopted the fully encrypted model. I believe the figure is probably higher, but I couldn't find another citation. Digging into that, one finds that this 2020 mandate by the California Department of Justice has been controversial. For example, there was a highly-publicized revocation encryption in Palo Alto in 2022, after it was adopted in 2021, due to demand for continued access to communication and transparency for the public and journalists. Following that, there was an unsuccessful California legislation attempt in 2022 with SB 1000 to revoke the police encryption, as it was perceived as reducing transparency, also noted in the LA Times editorial promotion promoting the pages of SB 1000. The argument has been raised that continuing to have an unencrypted system might hinder communications with other regional services, such as Slow County peers, that were encrypted. Per the Palo Alto Police Chief, that program has been solved. Palo Alto's new policy gives officers three options to comply with requirements to secure personal identifying information. They can transmit only a personal driver's license without additional information that will reveal their identity. They can split individual components of personally identifying information into separate transmissions, or they can use cell phones to call the dispatch center and transmit that information. The above, there's an article that I will send to Dana for future reference. And one issue cited by Chief Amy Watkins is that she felt the hybrid process requires hands-free operation and hereby hinders officers' ability to do their job. However, according to the article above, this current, this concern has been mitigated. Plus, by virtue of the fact that a large percentage of California's PDs are not using encrypted systems, they apparently don't find it an issue. Another problem with encryption was one I saw noticed by emergency managers, such as by the Silicon Valley agencies that coordinate emergency communications. They claim the police department encryption could compromise the ability to participate in incidents involving multiple mutual aid. Thank you.
Hi, Margaret Carmen. I'm going to continue reading this. "The lack of cohesion and communication between the unencrypted and the encrypted agencies will lead to adverse outcomes, particularly for the agency that is unencrypted and lacks the full functionality of a regional inoperable radio system." This is another comment from Morro Bay resident. "I am a full-time emergency manager, and we get blocked by encryption. We need to be able to monitor dispatch feeds, because events and incidents can..." We need to be able to monitor dispatch feeds because events and incidents can rapidly escalate. We need to be able to deploy and manage cert teams, evacuations, road closures, and other issues that require live feeds. I can't depend on a cop sharing his radio with me in the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC. The decision to block the public from receiving dispatch channels was done without consulting the California Emergency Managers Association or other related EM associations. We need a seat at the table when these decisions are being assessed or prior to implementation. The best example was a major wildfire in Orange County, and even the fire department had issues with encryption. The current fire chief came from the city of San Diego, and he concurd to unblock encryption." Obviously, I was wrong. This wasn't a Morro Bay resident, someone else. "Finally, I looked up the cost of other cities migrating to encryption radio and found that they were much lower. Paso Robles, 2.3 million for 12 bases, Etherington, 250,000, Visalia, 1.8 million, Lake County, 300,000. I understand that this proposal consists of adding two additional transmission towers, which I keep saying I'm vehemently opposed to, and we do not need to have more towers damaging our health, to cover our dead spot areas due to the decreased coverage, digital versus analog, as well as upgrading the current Black Hills site. This infrastructure cost, therefore, appears to account for most of the cost, and encryption itself is relatively low cost. I understand that one of those towers covers South Bay Boulevard, which has almost no population, so perhaps, please, let's at least have that not be necessary in part of the budget.
Betty Winholz, I'm going to speak to a number of items in the budget, but I do want to say that I oppose the utility project manager. I oppose the replacement of the radio system that was just referred to, and also initiating the five-year project for replacing water meters, all because I think they're wants, but they're not needs. And when our budget is on the edge and you're doing some balancing by using some reserves, this is not the time to do major projects that aren't necessary. And so I would encourage you to think about that, and if you feel like you need to go ahead and pass the budget tonight, maybe pull back those three items and talk about them at the next meeting till you can get a better consensus. In addition to that, I would like to encourage you to rethink the idea of going towards 50% for your general fund reserve and let it fall back to the 33%, which is, I think, in your resolution that's been passed several years ago. I would like to know the answer to why services are doubling under the Information Tech IT Fund. We used to have one person, now we have two people, so I'm wondering what's doubled up in that work effort. I know that being on the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm not speaking for them, but I am saying I know then that we were asked to talk about a grant that would replace some play equipment. I did not find that anywhere in the budget, so I'm wondering where that is. I am, you know, as I said earlier, I'm kind of about labels and process, and so when you say something is not to be exceeded, and then now we know there's a technical reason for that, the other, in this particular budget, it talked about the flooding along Main Street and looking at that, and it's entitled Parks and Creeks. And I don't understand how parks relates to that. It certainly is the Morro Creek that's the one that keeps flooding. I'm wondering about the debt service in Public Works, why it went from $15,000 in 2024 to 3.4 million. And this goes back to the old WRF that, or the current WRF, that the utilities division seems to currently have 17 employees, and we were told when the new sewer plant was built that the employee, they wouldn't need that many employees. So I'm wondering why that number's actually gone up instead of down. And then just real quickly, I encourage you to have a discussion about if you can send more TOT or tax money to the harbor department that's there because of all those vacation rentals rather than bringing it into the general budget, and then encouraging you to talk about maybe sending some of the parks' responsibilities back to the Parks and Rec Department rather than keeping it under Public Works, which is just huge right now.
Good evening, council. My name is Deana Lundquist. I am the CEO for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to respond to the CFAC revenue enhancement recommendations. The chamber is in agreement with the CFAC recommendations on a number of levels, from the increased day visitors recommendations from the WOW Week with Cal Poly, and other options with the food trucks as well. I think that is a short-term revenue generating idea. It's a good one. The chamber has a lot of experience doing this. This is a economic development opportunity for the city from a short-term revenue opportunity. However, I do remember when we were setting the city goals, events were something that you didn't want as a goal, and you wanted to put that on Visit Morro Bay and the chamber to take care of. With the chamber's economic development revenue being decreased by just about 50%, again, we're not in a position to do that. However, we have the most experience doing that in some of the festivals that we have done. I just want you to know, this is a great idea, and we support it. However, the strategy behind executing on some of, something like this takes significant experience. The chamber had spent over $100,000 on some of our festivals and earned over that, but not every year. So you have to make sure that you choose the right partner for some of these events, as well as integrating our business community. Some of the events that have happened in the past have not incorporated our businesses, and it's important that they feel part of this as well, because when the visitor comes here, experiences the event, we want them to continue on to our businesses as well and experience the whole city. Secondly, when you look at paid parking, I think a pilot program at The Rock would be a good idea, and the chamber has supported that for many years. The city is the largest landowner, and I don't think that is the area that, for a long-term revenue generation, that getting rid of the teen center and the Market Plaza and generating that revenue and going through that and putting something on those properties that's going to be an improvement to our community and something that's going to be a long-term revenue generator as well. So I just wanted to share that from the CFAC's hard work that they did, a lot of those that they came back with were something that the chamber supports and has supported for quite a long time, but it's execution on these items that's going to be integral. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on the budget?
Hello? My name is Sergeant Hasselback. On behalf of the POA, I'd like to speak about the radio issue that we've been having. Hearing some of the public speak on it, having worked in five different agencies from the border, San Diego, Orange County, and now up here in central California, it is a very big issue. Most of the shifts that we work, whether it's day shift or night shift, we are unable to hear transmissions throughout the city. We're constantly asking for readbacks. Dispatch can't hear us. It's scratchy. Simply calling in and using your cellphone not only is not realistic, but it's also an officer's safety issue. When we need information, we need it now. We need to return quick, and we rely on dispatch as they're always watching over us, they're giving that information that we need consistently, especially on critical incidents, calls that are always in progress. And yeah, so it's a consistent issue that we see here. I made some notes. I would encourage everyone, including city council and the public, if they don't think it's a big deal, they should, I encourage them to come on a ride-along, see how many calls we go on and how many times we have to request the information, or how much dispatch has to ask us to repeat the information that we're seeing. As far as transparency goes, this is why we have body worn cameras. This is why we go through methods and we hire officers and employees to do a supreme job out there on the streets. It's not a matter of transparency, it's a matter of officer's safety, individuals not showing up on our calls for service that don't need to be there. And frankly, some of these calls are very private, and they're impacting our citizens, and we don't need anybody else there except for public safety to assist and help the public with their issues at hand. As far as critical incidents go, there's, I've worked, again, I've worked in five different agencies. I've been involved in many critical incidents. When those incidents do happen, there's not an issue with radio traffic. The dispatch has the opportunity and the technology to patch in channels and to get those agencies involved, part of the EOC, part of the fire departments, and different agencies coming in on those command centers to help regulate and manage those incidents that are happening. So that I have to say about that.
Good evening, mayor, council. I just wanted to make a few comments. So on the revenue side, you know, again, this is probably, I don't know, the 10th time that I've said something about the budget and the top line not being relevant to how the city is going to continue to flourish over the long term. I agree that the CFAC meeting that happened is all short-term, and I also agree with the statement that was just made about, you know, from the Chamber of Commerce about being a partner in the business community, but yet again, we're still here talking about the same thing, which is lack of revenue growth. It's not going to work. Shouldn't have to talk about the police department having to ask for money to have technology to do the right thing for the community. If we had the top line, this would not be a question. That's a fact. It wouldn't be an issue. We need to flourish in the way that we bring revenue into the city. There was a topic that came up in the last meeting about capital projects, and I think it was an action to bring back to this council all of the capital projects that were going to be funded for '25 and '26, and we just said that the notes that were taken from action items only reflected a certain amount of things, but not relooking at capital projects. So like, again, we keep talking about the budget and the same thing and the same thing and the same thing over and over and over again. It was an action item for this council to get a list of capital projects for the rest of the year. If we don't know what we're actually spending and doing, what are we actually talking about? Then the last point that I'm going to make here, I actually, I think this council needs to take a step back and not approve anything except for what is key and core to the infrastructure of the city. If it's listed and it protects the community, it should be done. Technology is critical. You have a young police department that needs technology. We just heard why. Let's get it done. What we probably shouldn't be doing is spending money on capital projects that are just spewing from the budget. There is really no need to do that. We should not have six different items to approve all at once, one thing at a time, that equals growth for the residents of the city. And I want to make one last comment because I thought that it was completely inappropriate in the last meeting. I have not ever asked this council nor anybody else to run the city like it's a corporate entity. There was a comment made, "We're in the business of serving the community, so then serve the community." We're doing a lot of talking about meetings and open forums and this and that. Let's actually stop talking. Let's actually get some work done. Let's improve the top line so that the people that are protecting us don't have to worry about budgets and money. But we're not doing that, and I really recommend that this council does not approve anything that is not critical infrastructure to the city. It is extremely, extremely important that we get back on track with how this should
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Storm. I am a sergeant with the Morro Bay Police Department, but I'm also our Police Officers' Association president. Many of you I recognize basically because I work for the city, but many of you out in the audience don't get to see me very often, but I do watch your meetings every Thursday when they get released, and I've been doing so since I lived here in 2019. So thank you guys so much for all of your service, and thank you for everybody in the audience for coming forward and being a part of our city government. I don't think people realize how important that is. And it's something that I'm trying to carry along with our POA so that they understand how our city works and what we're looking at when we talk about these things. That being said, some of the comments that were made in regard to the encryption and our radio towers and, you know, using our cellphone, I'm going to piggyback on what Sergeant Hasselback said, and I'm coming to you as a POA president, as a police officer, but also as a mother, as a friend, as a coworker. I sit in the office a lot as a supervisor and approve reports and go over things when people come in to make complaints. I'm usually the first face that they see. While I'm in the office, I'm listening to my radio, and I can't tell you how many times I've had anxiety over the fact that I cannot hear my people. I don't know where they are. I don't know where they've stopped. When we're on a traffic stop and somebody gets out of the car as we're approaching it, we can't afford to keep repeating information while also giving orders to that person. That is a very scary feeling. And as Grant said, Sergeant Hasselback, I would encourage anybody who's interested to please come and do a ride-along with us so you can see what we do. Before I got into this job, I had no idea what police officers did. It was very eye-opening, and that was about 14 years ago. I love what I do. I think this is a great city, but there are things that happen in the city that we respond to. And encryption, again, I'm not going to even go into that because to me, that's not as important. There are important components to it. What I care about is being able to hear my people. Miguel over here is 21 years old. He does not have a family yet, but he is a young man, and he's in this career, he's new. I would hate to see something happen to him because I can't hear him or because he's having to repeat information as he's walking up to a car and he's not paying attention to what's going on in that vehicle. I have a family. I want to make sure I make it home every day. I have two children. They attend school here in Morro Bay. We love it here, and I love being a part of this police department. But I am coming to you, telling you that this is an issue, and I understand that it's expensive, and I understand that we have issues with the towers. I'm not disagreeing with that and, you know, EMF and all of that. I've listened to that. I understand that concern, but I want you guys to look at these people and look at them as your sons, your daughters, your husbands, your wives, and how important it is for us to be able to communicate and to understand what's going on. I sit on South Bay quite a bit because we do have traffic accidents out there. I cannot hear anything dispatch says when I am on South Bay. I have to come all the way back up to Highway 1 to be able to hear if my people are transmitting, so I can't do traffic control where we have traffic accidents because of that. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else for public comment on the budget? AGPR, there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, Madam Mayor, one moment. Our first speaker is Courtney Shepler. You should be able to talk now, Courtney.
Thank you. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we hear you.
Great. I just wanted to point out, in this budget, there is also part of the budget, in addition to this current fiscal year, that's the long-range forecast. And, you know, your finance team is in a very difficult position of trying to solve a long-term forecast right now, that to make it work, they have increased revenue assumptions in out-years. They have decreased personnel expense increases in the out-years down to, like in the range of 1% increase as year-over-year. And we know that that doesn't keep up with the cost of living and step increases. So what that means is you've got a long-term forecast here that is projecting staffing cuts unless you do something really, really dramatic to increase revenue. The revenue assumptions in this long-range plan have already been increased over where they were in the prior years. So as a former CFO, I tell you, we've got an alligator mouth problem, and that's when the lines on your Excel spreadsheets start to cross, where your revenue isn't increasing, you know, at the same rate your expenses are. And that's a problem that you've really got to be strategic about solving and very proactive about solving. It's not going to solve itself. So it's concerning to me that the one change in this budget was a cut to economic development, which is the very thing that could be the solution to some of these problems. So it doesn't feel like a very thoughtful move to cut economic development resources when you've got a real revenue problem in the out-years. So I would ask you to be very thoughtful and very proactive about how you are going to solve your revenue problems as a city. And for those of us that are residents that don't want to see city services or staff cut, it's very important that we continue to receive these services. Additionally, there have been moves recently that were unfortunate that have alienated portions of the community, portions of the traveling public who may see more...
Oh, sorry. Courtney, we're having some problems hearing you. Courtney, we're having some problems hearing you. It seems like your phone is cutting out. Yeah, we see her microphone, but she's no longer speaking, but it looks like there's something coming through, Mayor. But we can't hear anything on our end. I'm sorry, Mayor, Zoom crashed. We'll be back with it in one moment. Courtney, are you still there?
Good thing we're doing technology upgrades here. Perfect timing.
Go for the...
There you are, Courtney. Let's see. Nope, she's cutting in and out. I think there's an internet connection issue here. One moment. Yeah, we've lost connection to the internet in the back here. The channel's still going? It's just whatever reason, Mayor, the Zoom is constantly crashing and updating. But the channel stream is still going.
So, we can't hear them on the phone at all?
Yeah, Zoom completely crashed multiple times, and there's no internet connection on there. So, I'm trying to fix it right now.
Thank you. Thank you out there in Zoom land. We crashed. Courtney, you have 45 seconds left on your time. If you're still on the phone there, otherwise, you're welcome to call back and we'll give you the rest of your time. AGP?
One moment. Her hand is raised. Just give us one moment. All right, Courtney, you're allowed to speak.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't know exactly where I was cut off, so I'll do my best to wrap up quickly here. So, my points were, you've got a long-term budget problem with lower revenue coming in and an inability to meet, you know, basic expense increases in the out years. So, really would ask you to put your efforts into economic development and rolling out the welcome mat for all, not closing the door to people with decisions that are actually short-sighted in terms of how welcoming we want to be as a city. Finally, I just ask that you work on helping, you know, leading the process with city staff to have a mature capital planning cycle so that you can look out 10 years in terms of these needs, such as the needs expressed by our police department tonight. I don't know how anybody listens to this need and says that's not important to us as a city and what we want our police officers to have access to.
Thank you.
Is a stable and reliable system. Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, that is all the raised hands in queue.
There are no more raised hands?
No, Madam Mayor, that is it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, someone else just raised their hand right now, Judy Lynn, if you're okay with that still?
Yes.
All right. Judy, you are allowed to talk now.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to say that I feel the need for a new system for the police department is at the top of the list, although I do feel that we should look for a less expensive model that still meets the mandate requirements. And I do not feel that we can afford a new utilities position. And we should consider decreasing staff in order to meet long-term essential expenditures. Thank you.
AGP, are there any more raised hands?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no more raised hands in queue.
With that, I will close public comment on the budget item and bring it back to Council. I'm going to start with asking the police chief, please, to give us a little bit of information on the finances of the radios as brief as possible. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to answer a few of the questions certainly that we've heard here tonight. Talking about the initial quote that was presented with this capital improvement project, engaging in this effort with a lack of overall radio infrastructure created an initial quote that covers essentially all of the needs. That was an initial quote and a quote that was given approximately six months ago when we were still learning about this process and the needs that we were going to have to go through to get our radio system where it needs to be to keep our officers safe. PD staff has continued to work and educate ourselves on the best path forward for the department and the city. This includes continued evaluation of the best locations for the radio antennas. Since the initial quote, one of the things that we've been working diligently on is addressing the fire station location, certainly listening to the community, the questions that I received from Council. That appears to be something that, in future discussions, that is possible to avoid, but still receive the coverage that we need in North Morro Bay, which would be a great cost savings from the initial quote. Funds spent on the radio communications for this department since its incorporation. The Black Hill Tower was installed in 1985 with the structure built to house the equipment in 1985. That was 40 years ago. Other than a few radio replacements, radio installments in new vehicles, radio infrastructure has received zero from the general fund or any other fund within the city. That has placed us in this position where we have lacked the ability to upgrade the system over the years, which has brought this cost at this sticker-shock price. Regarding officer and community safety issues for our current radio system, you've certainly heard that from our POA, our officers. Police radio is an officer's lifeline. Poor radio communication is also a community safety issue. Communication related to needs can delay response and care for the community. Cellular phones for officers during contacts are dangerous distractions and are never supported as a form of communication with dispatch or other officers. Morro Bay has two areas within the city where radio communication is unreadable. Those specific areas are North Morro Bay, north of San Jacinto, and Lower Quintana, and South Bay Boulevard from Highway 1 to city limits. And we also have issues with coverage Highway 41 East of the city limits. Officers are frequently called to these areas within the city limits, but also outside of city limits when we have reports of a vehicle collision or some other critical incident where CHP is out of pocket and unable to respond immediately. The California DOJ mandate for personal identifiable information that was issued in October of 2020. Personal identifiable information must be limited to authorized personnel, and transmission of such information must be encrypted. The information in this bulletin is particularly relevant to the radio transmission of protected data. That is directly from the mandate. The mandate was issued in October of 2020. Police departments across the state are moving toward or have implemented digital encryption within their radio system as this mandate is not going away and the protection of personal information will continue to create mandates for public agencies. One of the questions I received is, why now? Why, if this mandate was issued in October of 2020, why are we just bringing this forward now? One of the things that we work with, so San Luis Obispo Sheriff's Office is the contract agency that we use for dispatch. And we've known for several years that Slow Sheriff's Office has been moving toward a new dispatch center with the Templeton location. And previously, under Jody Cox, he was addressing these issues, communicating with the Sheriff's Office. I'm still currently in communication with the Sheriff's Office to continue to address the issues that we're having with the radio communications within our city and also outside our city within the county. There's a lot of moving parts to this, and that's an important thing to understand because, while for this project to move forward with Council in our city, that initial proposal is a necessity. And from there, any further contracts or money needs that we need, we will continue to return to you for approval for that contract. But we have to have a starting off point. And I believe that the 1.3 million is a big starting off point because of the lack of infrastructure that has been taken care of. One of our community members mentioned some of these projects were much less for some of these other agencies. One of those agencies that was mentioned was an agency that I came from. And I know that there was always something to be addressed with the infrastructure related to radio communications within that city over a period of years. So, when you're looking at a digital conversion, it's much less because you've maintained that infrastructure, and that's the important part about this. Slow County agencies who have gone to or are prepared for digital encryption are as follows. Paso Robles Police Department, San Luis Obispo Police Department, they are both fully encrypted and working on digital frequencies as we speak. Pismo Beach Police Department, Grover Beach Police Department, Oro Grande Police Department, and the San Luis Obispo County Sheriff's Office, they are all on the verge or ready to flip the switch to digital encryption. This is the reality for police agencies, and the cost of this implementation is only going to increase. One of my concerns that I issued to the letter to Council was that, let's say we don't go to the full digital encryption. There is an alternative. We can remain analog, but it doesn't address our black spots, our communication voids, the issues that we have with our infrastructure currently that make it unsafe for our police officers and our community. But along with that is for us, for these officers to leave the city of Morro Bay, they are going to require digital encrypted capable radio systems within their vehicles and in their handhelds. Because if they were to be asked to go to a critical incident, protests, an active shooter outside of Morro Bay, if we do not have the radios, which is a large part of this budget, if we don't have the radios that are capable of switching to that digital encryption channel, these officers will not be able to communicate with any other agencies that are going through the digital encryption. And they are not going to switch over to an analog signal to satisfy the few officers that come from the Morro Bay Police Department. That puts a lot of officers at risk, not just the Morro Bay Police Department. I'd like to recall an event in 2020 where there was an active shooter in Paso Robles. There were two SWAT officers that were caught in a crossfire that were from out of the area. Paso Robles Police Department had already been on a digital encryption channel that they used for their SWAT team. The other SWAT teams that came from out of the area, they did not have the encryption key that made it necessary for them to communicate with those other officers. And as a result, they ended up really flanking the suspect, and during an exchange of gunfire, two officers were hit with friendly fire. That's one of the things that can happen when you're unable to communicate with your fellow officers. I believe I've answered most of the questions, but I just wanted to again reiterate that there are alternatives to the full digital encryption. This project satisfies two things. One, provides the much-needed improvement to the emergency radio communication system that is the lifeline for officers in the field. And two, it provides the ability to comply with California Department of Justice mandate without putting officer safety at risk. So, if we were to not go with the digital encryption, it still leaves item number one, which is the safety of the officers. There is an alternative cost to that. I'm going to say conservatively, it's about $600,000 because of the lack of infrastructure that has been placed within this city over the years. Couple of things I'd like to also address quickly, Mayor, is the city benefits beyond the police department. I've addressed some of those in the letter to you, but I just wanted to advise on a few things. Our current 1985 tower on Black Hill is strapped to our King's Water Tank that provides water to, our Black Hill Water Tank that provides water to the residences around the golf course. The feet on this tower, because it is 40 years old and we live at the coast, is completely rusted out. All three legs are completely rusted through. This tower is being held up by the conduit or the antenna and a couple of straps that have been strapped to the water tank. In speaking with one of our water department heads, he mentioned that his concern is that if that tower were to fail, that would damage the water tower and eliminate all of the water to those residences around the golf course. Additionally, the cost and the logistics to repair that water tank would be very expensive. In this proposal, it is the recommendation to replace that water tower, meaning remove that water tower from the water tank, excuse me, remove the tower from the water tank and place it on a self-standing cement pad. That would then create a better tower communication for fire, harbor, police department, State Parks is on that tower as well. Each of those antennas is about 200 or 300 pounds, so there's a lot of weight that is being distributed by that water tower. That's a recommendation. At least, if we weren't to go to the digital encryption, that's a big part of this. A few other key items that a tower placement at the water reclamation facility would help the water department in the following ways. The tower real estate provides independent communication pathway capabilities, opens a pathway to the King's Water Tower and pump stations at Cloisters and Barcadaro and South Bay Quintana Road to provide a redundancy wireless network if the event, the fiber optic line was severed by construction, makes future integration cost-effective, easier and possible. Potential for bigger distribution possibilities for passive income for a cellular carrier and provide infrastructure for cellular extenders for the water reclamation facility instead of connecting them to less compatible structures. So, there are alternatives in front of you. What we need at this point is the opportunity to move forward with this project. It is a lifeline. It is a safety issue, not only for officers, but also for our community. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Questions for the chief?
Thank you, Chief Watkins. I really appreciate the additional information that you gave to us this evening. You know, you did remind me, I forgot, how old that Black Hill Tower was. And this came into a conversation. We were talking about 97.3 The Rock and where we were going to locate, try to locate their antenna, right? And so, we did have this discussion, and I had forgotten the details to that. So, I greatly appreciate you talking about this evening. It was definitely one of the concerns that I had with regard to a tower being there. So, when you were saying a tower on a pad, would it be in the same area?
It would be just about 20 feet, I guess, to the south, but it would be completely independent from the water tower. So, it would be on a self-standing pad. The old tower back in 1985, it was below ground. So, that's where the rust and those legs came into play. So, this would actually be above ground, which would last most likely a lot longer because that's one of the reasons it's failing is, and the rust has accumulated because it was subterranean.
Right. Thank you for that. Something else that you brought up, your colleagues, we're also talking about if we didn't do this, then we are, correct, relying more on the handhelds. Is that correct? Am I hearing this right? Would we only have reliability in those areas from the handhelds?
So, the handheld... So the handhelds are actually a weaker radio. The mobile radios within the vehicles are a stronger radio connectivity to any kind of frequency or radio system. So the primary radio is always going to be your mobile radio within your vehicles. The handhelds are when officers get out of the vehicles. Maybe they're chasing somebody or they're entering residences with a lot of different kind of interferences. But the handhelds can be very strong and just as capable as the mobile in-car radios. That comes at a price. And so one thing that I'm always very cognizant of is what is necessary for Morro Bay? What is necessary for our 10 miles, 10 square miles, five miles of that being water? But part of our issue is the topography that is Morro Bay. Pismo Beach had the same issues. They did a whole new radio system and still had a difficult time with coverage. And we are fortunate and we will benefit from the industry experts that have gone through that with Pismo Beach because we all have, Pismo Beach and Morro Bay are very similar in the kind of their crescent shape with the many hills that are covered. So that's one of the issues. Some of these flat cities can cover, because radio frequencies go by line of sight. And one of the benefits of a flat community or a flat city is you can handle it with one tower, one antenna that's strong enough to cover everybody because it's line of sight in Morro Bay. And that's where the radio void and disruption that you've heard from, the officers, it's because we have one tower and we lose that line of sight. And back in 2004, there was an antenna placed on private property under a lease agreement at Telephone Hill, just at the end of Nutmeg there, by the Nutmeg Tower, private property. In 2008, AT&amp;T came in and said, we're taking it over. The lease owner called us and said, get your equipment off of the tower. So we lost that site in 2008. And there was never any improvements or any movement forward to eliminate that void that happens in North Morro Bay. I believe that with the people that we're working with and the information that we've received, there is an opportunity to remedy that void, both in North Morro Bay and also on South Bay Boulevard. We do answer a lot of calls on South Bay Boulevard. Usually it's late at night, it's dark, it's traffic collisions, it's individuals that have had too much to drink, it's individuals that are fighting with one another, lost people that are lost. So it's very important for us with our hills and the way that Morro Bay is laid out, that we address those issues. Whether it's on an analog or a digital frequency, it doesn't matter. But we need to, we need to address those voids.
Yeah, I would expect that there would possibly be time response issues if you're trying to hear what someone is saying or trying to figure out where someone is because you're not getting clear information. I'm thinking about South Bay Boulevard. And then if you're trying to hear it from somewhere else, it coming in from somewhere else. I just want to say, I mean, clearly, this is a public safety item and that we have put off, kicked the can down the road on this infrastructure. And here we are tonight, having to finally deal with it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add to that. I am not the first police chief nor the first council that have addressed this issue. I hope that we can, we can move forward in a good way and address it. And this infrastructure will be good for 30, 40 years. And that's the goal in this, is to not spend the money and be cavalier about this. It is something that, spending that money, we're doing it with understanding that we want to be able to control our future. That's why I'm looking at city-owned sites, which is water reclamation facility, one of the pump stations down here. We just learned that there is a possibility for antenna that would eliminate the need for a fire station, too, which would save us a lot of money. So we're continuing, I'm continuing to learn about this and will continue to do so to make sure that before we make any recommendations or move forward with anything, you will have the very best information that I can provide.
Greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate your presentation tonight. Question for you about the option that doesn't really seem like an option of doing nothing. And I wanted to emphasize this point. With the county sheriff going to encryption by the end of this year and basically agencies moving in that direction, if we were to opt out of doing something at this point, we would still need to replace all of our radios that would make them encryption capable. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And that's at a cost, you've informed us, of approximately $200,000. And then you've described the condition of the Black Hill Tower that needs to be replaced regardless. And you've included that cost in your original estimate, which is about $238,000. So really, the cost of doing nothing or an embedded cost is $440,000, basic. So that is part of your $1.3 million estimate of upgrading the entire system, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And if we can avoid Fire Station 2 and use property and infrastructure that we already have, that could reduce that cost quite a bit as well.
And I guess my last question. If we were to take, take the route of only replacing the radios, we would still have a suboptimal system.
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions?
Chief, you know, I've had probably three conversations with you on this, and I know enough to be dangerous. But I did have a conversation with Chief Nathan Paul of the county sheriff's office, which you probably have already done. And he mentioned that they would be able to handle analog communication also. So my question to you, my big question, if we got new radios, can you have a different frequency for analog and digital within that radio?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So pretty much, you know, my biggest concern on this project is, again, the scope of it. And we are learning every day. You've done a great job. We've had conversations about it. And before I can commit, I feel, $1.3 million, I'd like to be sure that this is the correct approach to take. You know, I mean, even looking at another site where we can have a mountain, where we can have just one tower, I don't know if that's even feasible. But I appreciate everyone here. I understand that the safety is an issue. I didn't realize, we haven't done anything since 1985. So you've answered my question on the radio, so thank you.
I would like to know, what is, the state park, what do they do? Do they have radio frequency issues as well and encryption issues?
I do not know what State Parks deals with on a regular basis. I would imagine that, I believe they're dispatched through CalFire. State Parks has their own dispatch. I do not know what State Parks is.
Because they're kind of right in there with the South Bay Boulevard area, too. And I just wonder, like, how they're getting, do they not, do they have dead zones, too?
I do not know the answer to that question.
And, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you. Are there other questions for staff on the budget? No questions for staff on the budget? I'm going to ask a few then. There was a question about the Public Works Debt Service. Mr. Qualick, is that the?
Mayor, I can speak to that.
Emily, thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. Director Conrad, thank you.
Sure. So this was addressed in the last presentation, and it also has language included in the budget document itself. So in 2425, when we had to complete this budget, at that time, the debt service was estimated based on WIFIA and SRF loan repayment. And that amount was approximately $3.4 million annually. Early in 2425, staff was successful in amending that SRF loan. And part of that amendment was the delay of the SRF loan repayment. And so the actual repayment is going to be $1.5 million this year, 2425. And that's the amount you see budgeted in 2526. And SRF loan repayment will commence in September of 2027.
Thank you for clarification on that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Qualick. And then, Director Conrad, there was a question about the IT wages. We've had two employees in there for several years. I know one retired and we just replaced and hired. So is there a reason for the difference in IT funding?
I think services and staff may be conflated in the public comment. So those are two separate things. The services category is our digital services. It's all of the city's software. So if there's the increase, there would be due to new software programs. I wish, sure, yeah, I wish I had more detail in front of me at the moment, but I don't. Speaking about the staffing, yes, we had one person for approximately 30 years, and he did a fine job. Shortly before he retired, we did add a second position out of necessity. Having only one person to support hundreds of devices, over 100 staff, seven different facilities, internet, software, tech support, it's not something that one person can do. And that's not even considering all the security breaches we have to monitor on a daily basis, 24 hours a day. So we need to have probably three or four staff, but we're making do with two.
Thank you for that. And then there were some comments at the CFAC meeting and also tonight about wages, staffing wages. And I just, for public comment, would like you to share, we have a three-year contract, 3%, 4%, and 5% in different departments. You know, I've heard this, you know, not sustaining people. Plus, we did an equity adjustment. And so just publicly, I don't know where somebody thinks we were only giving 1% pay raises or something. But if you could just clarify that.
Sure. I believe she was referring to the 10-year forecast. And we don't know what those pay rates will be. And so we didn't put in large increases because we don't know what it will be and it would make it appear that we could afford a higher amount when it comes to negotiation times. So there was, there is just a small increase in those rates after the contract period.
So the forecast past 2027?
Precisely. Yes.
Okay. I heard it different at CFAC. I heard that, I guess the comment I heard was that we weren't able to keep employees or be competitive with employees because we were paying lower wages. And that's just not factual anymore.
Correct.
Based on this. Thank you.
Correct.
Because we did those adjustments. Thank you.
Yes, we did.
And then a question on the general fund reserves. And addressing that, whether it's through CFAC or coming back to us to have a conversation about that threshold and looking at the 33%, is anything scheduled with that? We've talked about it, but I don't know where we are.
By the end of 2526, we will have completed the risk-based assessment of reserve.
Thank you. And then on the economic development contract, that was reflected in there, just showing what was proposed. So the actual reduction was $40,000 from last year's contract, correct? It wasn't $65,000. Was that because of the projected?
The proposed budget included the proposal at that time, which was for $90,000.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other questions before we go to comments? Comments? Yes.
Last question. Again, I want to highlight that I am not against public safety. I'm just against mandating 1.3 million right now until I really understand the whole system. If I made a motion to approve the budget with an amendment of earmarking the PD communication without a dollar figure, does that make any sense? Until I can, until I know, you know, what exactly is going to be done?
May I respectfully say no, not really. But let me also clarify that by adopting this budget, you're not adopting $1.5 million. You're adopting $317,000 for that project. That's all that's budgeted in this current budget year.
Well, what I heard through CFAC is that the chief was going to try to maybe even get a loan for 1.3 million. And so I just want to make sure I don't approve 1.3 million today. That's all. If you can clarify that.
Adopting the budget as it is presented to you today would not be committing to $1.5 million. Anything like that, at that amount, anything in excess of the city manager's threshold of $220,000 needs to come back to this city council for approval. So adopting this budget does not commit to 1.5 and you will see any contracts prior to signing. You'd have to approve them. So my recommendation would be to...
Councilmember LaVey? Councilmember Landrum?
I guess I'm curious about the parks and creeks issue being to, the item, too? If I could get clarity on why it's got parks in there.
You for the question. Kelsey, Member Landrum? That's just the name of the category. For example, another category is streets, but a capital project under that has to do with trees. So that's just how the categories were named. It's an overall category. It doesn't mean that anything in that category has to do with parks.
Okay. And then I forgot to ask Chief Watkins a question, if I could. And just curious, have you ever thought about doing satellite rather? Is that an option or?
We've had conversations with one of our vendors, and satellite was not a recommendation that they made.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be voting for the budget as presented. And a few comments that I'd like to make about some of the things that I heard tonight and where we are in this process. So a reminder to folks that we're at the very end of this process in terms of the approval process. And a lot of the comments that we heard tonight are so important to prepare us for next year's budget cycle. So some of the things that I've heard tonight that I want to affirm and actually agree with is the need that the city is going to need to focus stringently and deliberately on top-line revenue growth, do everything that we can to increase the top-line growth and apply concerted efforts toward that. We also need to wrap our arms around capital projects and really sharpen our pencil with the total cost over the years that those are going to be. And I think that ties directly into our police communications, actually, it's citywide communications project. We also mentioned, there was also mentioned tonight the need for some austerity measures so that we can provide for essential services. This is an essential service. And there is a cost to doing nothing that would be really a sunk cost. I don't think that would be a wise use of our money to do a Band-Aid. So I'm for the, for having that line item for the police department communications in the budget. And then lastly, I'll just say that in the budgeting process, I know our city approaches it in a very conservative fashion, meaning that top-line growth estimates, both for this year and moving forward, are very conservative. And then, so they're at the lower end of the range. And then expenses are very conservative as well, meaning they're at the top end of the projected range. So almost always, when we look back to the prior year versus budget, almost always, unless there's a recession or something completely unforeseen, like a pandemic, that the city does better versus budget than projected. And that's because of the conservative budgeting nature that municipalities in general take, and our city does as well. And I'll just close by saying, I've heard comments throughout this budget cycle about how we're handling our reserves. I believe we've been prudent with our reserves. The reserves are going down about 1% in this budget for the projection. That's by about $1 million. And that was going from 40% last year to 39% this year. So I think we're being prudent about that as well. And by the way, that $1 million went over to the pavement management plan, which is in our capital improvement plan. So I, there's always room for improvement with budgeting. So I, there's always room for improvement with budgeting. I think one of the things that I'm going to look forward to next year is is being a little more intensive with this process earlier in in the process, earlier in the year, in the calendar, having more public workshops, doing some of my own town halls on this item. And then again, recognizing that that this is the completion of the budget cycle tonight. So thank you to Emily, our finance director. Good job on this process, and we appreciate all the work that you've done, as well as all the department heads, and I appreciate all the input from our community members tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Echols. I kind of want to pivot from where you were talking about the 1 million that went into paving and where CFAC, during their discussions with regard to the budget, were concerned about that 1 million moving over here on out. So I do agree with you that we, I think we need to be a little bit more diligent in starting the process. I also wanted to clarify that CFAC's involvement, they are charged with the duty of reviewing the proposed budget and making recommendations to city councils, especially if there is an emphasis on the Measure Q and E money. And I know that gets questioned out there, but they are also, part of their purview is to be able to help help us in the budget review process regardless. And so their findings, I think, are relevant here. I also feel that it's important, moving forward, to know that we can do better than this. I truly believe some of the issue that we had here, not only tonight, but prior in the review and with CFAC, was that it's unfortunate when you kick a project down the road, a very important infrastructure one, one that was deemed tonight an essential priority for this community, which I absolutely agree. You know, it's just unfortunate in the timing that CFAC, you know, it came to them literally within days of their meeting, to the point where those of us, my colleagues, were sitting, watching the meeting, and were surprised by it as well. And I do not feel that is of any blame to staff in this case, it just is what happened. I'm hoping that we have a little bit more strategizing in terms of moving forward with our budgets, taking a look at the capital improvement plan. Why, why are we having a five-year plan if we're not following it? That's kind of how I look at it, if we're not sticking to it. And the other thing that I would say is that in order to have strategy, you have to have vision, and you got to stick with that. And so I believe, lastly, after all of CFAC work, I want to thank Brian Dorfman and Jean Johnson. They worked really hard on that revenue subcommittee to bring before council a lot of great ideas. You know, they might be short-term, but maybe they might end up being something long-term. All of it goes to the buckets that we have, and I feel that that is important. So all I have.
Thank you. I will wrap this up. Thank you to the audience for the participation in all the workshops that we've had to this point and this evening, and staff, the department heads and their teams, and Director Conrad, thank you for everything. I will be looking for a motion, and I'll ask in advance to make sure that, based on earlier conversation, the motion will include adding language that we're transferring the additional 88,000 from transit to paving. So who would like to entertain this motion?
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry, I believe that's for 2425.
2425.
The 88,000, the 488,000, that'll be effective in 2425.
2526?
It's not part of the 2526 budget.
It's part of this, okay. Well, then I need, Mr. Qualick sent me this information, so if he gave me some back...
Oh, here we go.
That's a correct statement, but it would affect the budget authorization for what we could spend from the project budget, which I think would go into this capital budget. I could be wrong. I'd feel safer knowing that we have the authorization to spend it, because otherwise, it needs to be put into a project account. I guess it could be the former years, but...
I'll be completing the transfer in 2425.
So we don't need to include it, Director Conrad? Well, thanks a lot, Mr. Quali... No, just kidding, just kidding.
Sorry about that.
On a lighter note, okay. Well, I'll make the motion, because nobody else is. I'll jump in there. You want all these individual? Nope. I'll move approval of resolutions approving fiscal year 2526 operating and capital budgets, new job classifications fiscal year 2526, and 2627 salary schedules fiscal year 2526 and fiscal year 2627 management salary and benefits, investment policy, and fiscal year 2526 can appropriations limit. And I will ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And we'll do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Echols?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LeFay?
Yes.
Mayor Prosser Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixem?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Thank you. We have one item left, 9B. Allow Mr. Singwald and Ms. Conrad an opportunity to shift gears there. AGP, thank you for patching us up on Zoom and holding the meeting over. We appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Singwald, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mayor Lon Singwald, Community Development Director, and I'm pleased to present the June 2025 quarterly short-term rental update to the council. In the interest of transparency, I've committed to providing quarterly updates to the council on our efforts to implement the STR ordinance. So I presented the last quarterly update in March, and I'll present another one again in September. A very brief background, so the current STR, short-term rental ordinance, was adopted and certified by Coastal Commission in September of 2021, as I've discussed in the past. Initially, until actually this year, the city relied on the business license process for STR compliance. What we found is that that really hasn't been an adequate process to collect the data that we need to effectively implement the ordinance, and just hasn't provided really the right avenue to be able to ensure STR compliance throughout the city limits. So beginning in January of this year, the Community Development Department created a short-term rental permit process to begin implementing the ordinance. So this has been in progress for a year since I started in my role last June. So I just want to kind of break down the background into the second half of last year and then the current year to date. So last year, we really laid the groundwork for the short-term rental permit process. So previously, there was no short-term rental permit. We had to actually create a permit in our permit tracking system called CityWorks. We had to create a workflow, coordinate with IT to actually develop that permit. We developed required application forms, worksheets, checklists, all the materials that were necessary to implement this process. We created a website. We inventoried and organized all of the existing on-record short-term rental data. That's really important. When I started, there were, you know, multiple spreadsheets updated at different periods of time, and I think with a lot of transition in the Community Development Department and loss of institutional knowledge, we just did not have a good handle on the current baseline information for all the short-term rental permits, which made it very difficult to implement the ordinance or to initiate code enforcement for illegally operating STRs. We could receive a complaint from a community member about a STR operating, and it would be difficult for us to actually determine whether or not that had a valid permit. And so the whole kind of purpose of this year's audit is to individually review every single property and determine whether or not they have a valid permit. That way, once we're able to start the proactive code enforcement, we'll have good baseline information to be able to effectively initiate code enforcement and close any illegal short-term rental in the city. We also did quite a bit of public information to get the word out about this new process. We issued press releases, and then we sent letters to all of what we call our on-record short-term rentals in the city, giving them a heads up about this new permitting process so they know what to what to expect. So we really, again, kind of laid the groundwork and the foundation for this process, got the word out before we rolled it out in January. Beginning in January, we developed a short-term rental permit implementation schedule and logistics. I'm not going to, of course, go into all the details of this, but it was actually a lot more involved than you would think. We had to spend a lot of time kind of brainstorming and developing procedures and timelines and charts and schedules to determine how we're going to rule out this process in a real deliberate and methodical way. We had to develop what we call sunset letters, grace period letters, deemed abandoned letters, permit denial letters. There were a lot of kind of stock letters we had to create to apply to different categories to implement this program. And like I mentioned, there's a sunset letter, which was a really important mechanism to officially document all of the STRs that we believed were no longer valid. So we developed a sunset letter. We sent them out to property owners, saying that our information shows that your ability to operate an STR expired in a past year. If you disagree, give us a call. We can discuss it. We'll kind of hear you hear you out, but our best information shows that you are expired. That is very important, because once we get to the point of identifying illegal STRs, what will happen is we'll hear, well, we had an STR permit from 2023, and no one told us to renew. So this will allow us to point to the sunset letter, say, no, we have documented that you are officially closed, and you're not allowed to operate any longer. So it's another good example of just laying this groundwork for future enforcement efforts. We also were very proactive, meeting with property management companies, since a few property management companies in the city manage many of our short-term rentals. So that was an opportunity for some efficiencies, partnering with the property management companies to review our inspection checklist and permit process. And then we sent renewal letters to all of our on-record STRs, and of course, developed the map that's attached to the staff report. Just to give you a sense of this year's workload so far with STR permit renewals, so we've conducted inspections on 70 short-term rentals in the city. Those are fairly detailed inspections. Some of those will require a couple of re-inspections. If our inspector has to come out to verify that a correction has been made, so we're making sure there's, you know, safety items that were viewed that are reviewed, making sure the local contact information is posted outside, making sure that there is actually off-street parking spaces available on-site for the short-term rental as required by the ordinance. So this is a pretty extensive inspection process. And then we were able to close 60 short-term rentals. So the majority of that 60 are the sunset ones that I mentioned, where we determined that their right to operate an STR had expired. We also just had quite a few operators, when they received their letter from us initiating the renewal process, they contacted us and said, you know, we're just not interested in continuing. You can just go ahead and close out our STR permit. And we do have a batch of short-term rentals that we have, are starting the process of denying for a variety of reasons. One is an ADU. An ADU clearly can't be used as a short-term rental. Another is located in a neighborhood that's subject to CCNRs. They do not allow for short-term rentals. We've identified structures that were illegally converted to a dwelling unit and previously had been, you know, a different type of structure, and so those cannot continue to operate as a short-term rental. So we've had to deny a few, and then the ordinance does provide a whole appeal process. So we have to follow kind of the correct due process to take away that STR permit, which can be a pretty extensive process that we're, we coordinate with the city attorney on. So far this year, we've processed 100 STR permits. That is a fairly involved process. There's a lot of documentation that we review, a lot of back and forth with our STR applicants. So both city staff and the compliant STR operators, and in many cases, their property management companies, have all put a substantial amount of effort into achieving compliance. And because of that, not just because of that, but because of that, we are taking relatively aggressive efforts to close down any illegally operating short-term rental. So if we're going through all this effort, the good actors are going through all this effort, if someone is operating an illegal short-term rental, we are going to take aggressive enforcement actions to close them down. So here's a summary of the current kind of baseline information based on six months of short-term rental permit implementation. I know this map is not possible to see on that scale, but it's attached to the staff report. I also recognize that it's always a little risky to publish a map with different address points on it throughout the city. But again, in the interest of transparency and just recognizing this is information that the community has asked for in the past, I wanted to provide this map of all of the on-record short-term rentals. Also, it's important to understand that every, for the last six months, not a day has gone by where I haven't had four or five pretty involved conversations with my staff about various short-term rentals and permits throughout the city. And so this is constantly evolving. So a map like this is going to be just a single snapshot in time, and it will change every single day, because we are very actively processing these permits. So it is interesting to do a breakdown of the numbers. So you can see total on record of 228. So that's the total number that we were able to identify on previous spreadsheets that showed any past indication that a short-term rental had been at some point recognized by the city as illegal short-term rental. Then we sent out those sunset letters for the ones that we believed most likely had expired and cannot continue to operate. So that was 60 sunset letters, which has resulted in 168, what I'm calling potentially active, so on record, but they haven't sunset or closed for another reason. So 168 potentially active. If you break that down to where they are in the annual permit process, so 19 have successfully passed the process, their STR permit has been issued. Another 75 are currently in process, meaning we're processing their applications, we're scheduling their inspections, we're reviewing their insurance information, we're reviewing their local, you know, property management information, we're looking at their listing, making sure that it has their license number posted, making sure that they pay the required 500 TOT. There's a pretty extensive checklist that we have to go down for each of these, and sometimes it can take weeks or months to go back and forth with an applicant before we're able to finally approve their STR permit, if we are able to. Then the next number, the 74, so I need to explain this. I know it can be a little confusing. These are STR permits that haven't been started. So the way we're rolling out this process is we're not doing it all at once, but we're phasing it throughout the year based on their current business license expiration date. All of our business licenses are kind of batched up with monthly expiration dates that fall on the last day of the month. So you could think of the 74 not started STR permits as the ones with business license that are set to expire between September and December, and they just haven't received a letter from us saying, hey, it's time to renew and get your STR permit. So we're going to get to them over the next few months. That number, again, is 74. Now, the big number that most people are interested in is, you know, where are we relative to that 175 cap on full-home residential short-term rentals? So if we break down that 168 by short-term rental type, what we see so far is 21 are commercial, which commercials owned, which means they're not subject to the cap. 10 are home shares, also not subject to the cap. And up to 137 are full-home residential STRs, which are subject to the cap. Now, that 137, remember, 74 haven't even started the process. So some of those are going to be home shares, and others may be closed, others may be denied for whatever reason. So that 137 is a max that could really only go down as we continue this annual process. And with that, so even though this is an update, I recognize that this... And with that, so even though this is an update, I recognize that this is a topic of great interest for the community and council, and inevitably often leads to a policy discussion. And so I did take time to outline a few options that I think the council might consider for future policy direction regarding short-term rentals. So just briefly, you know, option 1A, I'm calling the no-change option, and that is just to continue our current process, which is to do our audit of all of the on-record STRs, and during that audit, not issue any new STR permits, not for residential or commercial or home shares. And then by the end of this year, we'll kind of know exactly where we are relative to the cap, and then the council could consider potentially allowing people off the waitlist to fill some of those positions. The staff recommendation is option 1B, which is the same as what I just described, except to go ahead and direct staff to begin issuing commercial short-term rental permit. Since they're not subject to the cap, these are commercials, they don't have a lot of the same residential neighborhood compatibility concerns that are present in residential neighborhoods. So that's the staff recommendation, basically continue, status quo, accept, acknowledge, and direct staff to go ahead and issue a commercial STR permits. Option two is, since we know that we're well below the 175 cap, the council could say, go ahead and begin issuing residential and commercial STR permits. We're not recommending that because it is too messy to simultaneously do an audit and then approve new ones at the same time. And I think it makes a lot of sense to go a full year, see exactly where we are, then have a number that we could potentially let off the waitlist and decide at that point instead of issuing new ones and doing the audit concurrently. Then the third option is, there's always the ability, if there's a desire on the council to flat-out, at, you know, this point prohibit any future issuance of STR permits until changes to the ordinance are contemplated and initiated, the council could always direct an urgency ordinance to pause and prohibit any future STR permit issuance until amendments have been made to the STR ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. Questions?
Erolin, so in your, are you sending out citations right now? Bines for any purposes? I mean, and if so, how is that being handled?
Thank you for the question. So we send out citations when we identify any verified violation. So if we are made aware, whether through our proactive enforcement efforts that we're going to start with Deckard very soon now, of illegally operating STRs, or they're brought to our attention by community members, and we're able to verify that, yes, these are not permitted, but they are advertised on Airbnb or VRBO, we will send a notice of violation. Notice of violation will say that you have seven days to remove all of your listings and cancel all of your bookings and provide us evidence that that has happened. And on day eight, if you don't provide that evidence, we are going to give you a $100 citation. And day nine, we're going to give you a $200 citation. Day 10, we're going to give you a $500 citation. And day 11, another $500 citation until you are able to provide evidence that you've canceled all your bookings and removed your listings. Now, we haven't done that recently. There are a few where we're starting that process right now, but we just haven't identified any illegal ones recently to actually complete that process.
And are these management companies, a couple of them that I've talked to, do they have a separate TOT account for each individual house that's being rented out, or do they have just one TOT account?
There's a TOT account for each house, each STR.
Okay, first of all, when you say you've been auditing them, you don't mean a financial audit. You mean just you're auditing the, that there are rental, where the rentals are and stuff like that.
Yeah, I like to use the word audit because it is just a review of all the on-record permits, making sure they're in compliance, making sure they are paying the minimum 500 because that's one of the ordinance's requirements, but it's not a financial audit.
And have we ever done a financial audit on short-term rentals?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, okay. And when you said in 2020, like for instance, in 2022, someone could say, when they signed their original contract, no one told them they needed to renew it. Is that not in the language of the agreement that they enter into with the city when they, when they get an approved permit to have a short-term rental? Don't they have some kind of an agreement that says every year they have to renew their license?
Well, I think that's a good example of why the business license process wasn't a successful tool to implement the STR ordinance, because it really is just a business license. And yes, like any other business in the city, they are supposed to get a renewal notice and comply with that renewal notice. There have been, you know, we are aware of situations with HDL where for a change of address, for whatever reason, people weren't receiving the renewal notice. And so there are those types of situations where, you know, STR owners will have the stories that they tell us for why they didn't renew, and we have to, we have to consider those on a case-by-case basis.
And then when you, when you do consider them and you catch them up, do they have to pay retroactively?
Yes.
So they have to make up the missed years that they didn't pay?
There have been, there have been a few that have a, I would say, a valid viable explanation for why they didn't renew. I think in all of those cases, we were able to confirm that they were continuing to pay TOT, and they had an active TOT account, but maybe their business license expired a couple of years ago and they hadn't renewed. And so, you know, we determined that they had a good, a good case that they genuinely believed that their permit was still active since they were paying us TOT. But since they weren't renewing their business license, they were not having to pay that $709 business license renewal fee every year, and that's not fair to the others. So we have told them, if you pay, you know, the back renewal fee for two years, three years, will allow you to continue.
And has, has the response been in that?
We've had a couple that have paid to continue. I think we've had one that said they'll just abandon their permit.
Okay. And did we issue permit? I'm just confused. Did we issue permits to ADUs and residents in CCRs?
So again, I think a good example of why the business license process wasn't the best tool for implementing the ordinance. For whatever reason, there were business licenses issued for an ADU and a property in a neighborhood subject to CCNRs that don't allow for STRs. So yes, they did have valid permits that we aren't going to be able to renew because we've identified them, and they're not eligible for renewal because they don't comply with the ordinance.
Okay. And I just wonder if those were ever reported on? Like, do you know? Like, if anyone, I mean, it seems like if you, if you live in an area that has CCNRs, you would know that you can't have short-term rentals, and it seems like someone would have reported them.
I, I, you know, I don't have, I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you, if we've received past complaints before I started with, with the city. But as we become, again, we're reviewing all of the existing STR permits. So we're going to make sure that every single one complies before we, before we renew them. And so we're finding some of those as, as part of this process. If we've received complaints in the past, we may or may not. I just, I don't have that information right now. I can tell you, if we did receive a complaint, we would follow through, and if they don't remove their listing and cancel bookings, we would issue citations.
And do we, when we issue citations, do we ever follow up on them?
Yeah, that is a, that's a good question. So we do have, there is a process that the city has followed in the past where we issue citations, and we, we do keep track of them. And when they aren't paid, we have a process for sending them to the county tax collector, and the county is able to put, I'm not exactly sure of the right terminology, but basically add it to the tax, property tax bill for that property, and then pay the city for the citations from the property tax bill.
And we've done that?
We've done that in the past. That's something where I need to coordinate with the rest of the executive team just to kind of see where we currently are with that process and make sure it's happening moving forward.
Okay. And do the listings include, well, first of all, does the, the property owner submit the listing to the stat, to the city? Like, do we know, do we have, like, on record what all the listings say, the wording, and like, do we record, yeah, I mean, to the city, like, with the actual language of the listing?
Yeah, and I think, I think that is the beauty of our STR permit process, is we now have this tool to require this for all of the properties. And so, yes, the 100 or so that we have processed so far, we have received, you know, a copy of all of their listings. We've reviewed them and make sure they have their house rules on there, their permit number on there, all of the required information. So previously, we weren't able to do that with the business license. Now we're doing that with the STR permit.
And if they ever edit them, how, do we get notice of that? Or how, how would we, I mean, because they could just, they could say, we have two bedrooms and, or two beds, room for four people, and then submit that to you and then change it. Is there a way to know whether they do that or not?
Yeah, that, that could happen. It is, I mean, it is very difficult to, to keep track of, you know, so many short-term rentals throughout the city with all of these different online, you know, hosting platforms. I think that this software service with Deckard Industries does have some tools that'll be, help us be able to monitor for some of those things. But, I mean, you're right, there's always going to be the potential for changes to listings, and it's a lot of work keeping up with all of it.
Okay. And then do the listings, the listings online include a picture and a map to where the residence is?
Well, a lot of the, that's not a requirement of the ordinance. I think as a lot of us know, I think Airbnb and VRBO, they often don't publish the address, and they show kind of a general location. They don't show a precise location, which is a big reason why we rely on services like Deckard, because they're able to use AI and other tools to actually pinpoint where these properties are. So it's, the short answer is, no, that information usually is not on the listing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Singwald. I appreciate the comprehensive and methodical approach that you've taken, particularly this calendar year, to address your audit process. What would you estimate approximately the hours per week staff has, has spent on, on this? And I'm leading somewhere. This isn't a critical question. It's a genuinely curious question because I'm going to transition from your audit process to enforcement process. So would you have a guesstimate or an estimate of about how many hours per week staff has spent through this very comprehensive and methodical process?
It's difficult to give you, you know, accurate kind of precise number. I can tell you, it is, again, it's a substantial amount of work. So, you know, there is a, you know, one-half FTE, which is half of our billing inspector position, that's funded from the STR permit revenue that we receive. And I would say that that is fully utilized on STRs, conducting all of these inspections and, and re-inspections of the property and coordinating with our, with our planning team. So that's a significant amount of time right there. On the, the planning side, again, every single day, we have multiple, multiple conversations about various STR permits and different, all, every, every permit has its own story and unique situation that we have to work through to determine whether or not it's compliant and what information we need to verify compliance. So it's a, it's a substantial work effort. Because I am methodical, I probably want to take some time to really, you know, sit down and crunch some numbers to give you an accurate estimate on that.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking the time to wrap your arms around, around the challenge. Our enforcement levels and efforts in the past have left a lot to be desired. What I'm hoping is that after the end of this calendar year, once you have wrapped your arm around, around this challenge and completed your audit, that some of those resources that have been expended, probably at least certainly 10 to 20 hours a week of staff time, then might be able to be reallocated toward enforcement in, in as much as possible a proactive and diligent approach to enforcement. I think that's been one of the frustrations that we've heard from our community members in the past, that would be one of the things that would be looking for in next calendar year. So is that, am I, am I off-base a little bit by hoping that the resources that you've expended, I see the city attorney nodding his head, expended on this audit process might then be shifted over toward enforcement, or is that a different department?
That's absolutely correct. That's 100% correct. So the inspections are only once every four years, and we haven't done inspections in several years. There was a short time period during COVID where there was an inspection mostly on like fire hazards and fire pits. But we're doing, we're inspecting all properties this year. Next year, we don't have to do physical inspections. Properties will self-certify. So that .5 FTE billing inspector, they're available to apply that same amount of resource on proactive code enforcement.
Excellent. And that's, that's what I was getting at, is, so you've confirmed for me that this arc that you're, that you're going through now is in this audit process. At the end of the year, you'll be done with that audit process, and then there will most likely be a step up in terms of enforcement of the ordinance.
And if I may just, that's exactly correct. And really just to add and emphasize that by getting in 2026, we will have very reliable baseline information to determine whether or not an STR is operating illegally, which will allow enforcement to happen much more efficiently.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate your approach.
Just to add also, by September, then late August, you'll have another staff person as a city attorney who can help with code enforcement. I've found that when you're in-house, you're called on all the time to help with code enforcement. When you're outside counsel, you don't get those calls from the cities. They just don't want to pay the, the fees to, to do code enforcement. But when I was, back when I was here in Los Catos, they had letters that were ready to go out for short-term rentals that were already signed by me. They had the signature, and they could just get those out without even my authority, which helps, that the signature from an attorney does help with getting code compliance. So that'll be another body you'll have on staff for sure to help with code enforcement, not just with STRs, but with everything else.
You just answered, thank you, Mr. Schultz. You just answered something for me, who was going to continue with that. And I appreciate your comments. My questions were answered. Thank you.
Public comment is open.
Excuse me, Eric, can I ask one more, a couple more questions? I forgot, Mr. Singwald. One thing is, I, I hear, you know, I did my town, my first town hall was on short-term rentals, and so I've heard a lot of different sides of the whole equation. And one of the problems with enforcement I've heard is a lot of the violations happen at night and on the weekends, and we don't have code enforcement then. And the, the problem is, the police department doesn't coordinate with, you know, with your department. And are you working on some kind of a path to, you know, to fix that?
So there, I would say, having, as you can tell, thought very much about this entire process and looking at it from, from every angle. When we're talking about violations, there's kind of different categories. One is, you know, do they have a permit at all? And, you know, we have some historically illegally operating STRs without any permit. The other is, the ones that have a permit, are they following all of the requirements of the ordinance? And through this audit process, we're identifying the ones that aren't and having them correct that, or we're closing their permit. The third category is what you're talking about, which I call operational violations, where they have a permit. We were able to check all of the boxes for a permit renewal, but then we find out that there's noise complaints or their tenant, their guests are parking on the street instead of the off-street parking spaces, and that is what's happening on nights and weekends where our code enforcement staff aren't available. I think there is opportunity for improvement in our coordination with the police department to assist in, you know, responding to those complaints and documenting. I did have a recent example in this category where we received a complaint from a neighbor with photographic evidence that guests were parking in the street instead of onsite of the STR, and how we addressed that. of the STR, and how we addressed that is we issued a letter, we included the photographs that we received from a neighbor, and we said that, you know, we received this complaint with verification that you aren't complying with the requirement. We are documenting this to the, the file, and when you're up for your permit renewal, if we see a pattern of these types of violations, you may not be eligible for renewal. And that is a, a real big incentive for STR operators and property managers to ensure their guests are complying, because these permits are really valuable, and they want to hold on, onto them. So that's an example of how, you know, we've recently been handling a situation like that.
Okay, and, and also, I know we talked about at one time increasing the, I think we all agreed, we wanted to increase the penalty amount. Would that, would there ever be a penalty? In that, in that scenario, would someone be fined? Or like, are they given one warning and they're fined? Or how, how does that work?
And again, normally we issue a notice of violation, and we identify corrective action in a time period to comply before we issue a citation. Just going straight to a, so first, we would have to be able to document and verify, which is difficult sometimes. If we are able to, to verify a violation, then we, we could issue a citation. Yes.
Okay, and then are you track, or is there a way to track, to ensure that the people are paying the true TOT? You know, when people stay in a hotel, they generally play with, pay with their credit card, and it's pretty easy to track that. But with a short-term rental, you know, I, I, is there, I mean, since we haven't audited, we probably don't know if people are paying the true TOT. And like, for instance, how many nights they report when they do stay, you know, if that's a true number, and?
Yeah, so first, if I could just go back to your previous question and just, you know, add to my response about, you know, issuing a citation for, say, a parking or a noise violation. I think the, the, the challenge there is, with code enforcement, our goal is always to achieve compliance. It's not to, you know, go out and, you know, find violations and, and penalize with fees. And so I think that's why you don't see us issuing a lot of citations for kind of one-time complaints that we're receiving, because again, we're looking at, how can we stop this from happening in the future? How can we get compliance? Which is a little bit different than, you know, issuing, issuing parking citations or other types of citations that a jurisdiction may issue. So I just wanted to add that to my, my previous response. As far as TOT, the ordinance does require a minimum of 500, which we verify. I do know that Deckard does have an ability to, through their algorithms and, you know, running the web crawlers on the online hosting platforms, they're able to get a good sense of the activity that STRs have and how much TOT they, they should be paying. So that would be a tool that we have to kind of truth their TOT filings with what Deckard has seen.
Thank you.
Public comment is open on this item. I have one speaker slip, Elaine Finger.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. I wanted to start off by thanking staff for all of the work that has been done on this. I've been tracking this issue for many years. I'm sure you've seen me up here. Some of you have been on council for a while, and there's just been a lot of progress and very thorough. I'm a civil engineer, so I like the attention to detail, and I think it's getting us set up to be in a really, really good place, so I wanted to start with that. My first email on this topic to city staff was in 2022, and my message has been consistent throughout that, and that is, there is a strong need to get inactive STRs removed and permits issued to those on the waitlist. It's a huge need for us financially. The second highest source of revenue for the city of Morro Bay is TOT, and as it says in the staff report, our TOT has gone down in part because we don't have these short-term rentals. So staff has asked for your input. Staff report is also very well-done and very, for as complicated as an issue is, there's a lot of tables in there that summarize things, and those are really super helpful. There's a table on page four that asks for your input on policy direction. I strongly encourage you to support option two. This will maximize revenue to the city and will result in resuming issuance of permits to both commercial and residential immediately. I, I understand the desire to continue going through the process with the existing STR holders, but by the number shown in there, we're only at 137 maximum, and our cap is 175. So my ask is that we prioritize issuing to those on the waitlist, so that we can have that revenue coming into the city sooner rather than later. And I ask that you direct staff to a policy change towards option two, issuing STRs to both commercial and residential, as well as prioritizing issuing those permits now. One other item I wanted to mention, I know there was discussion on that $500 minimum of TOT. That requirement is very specific in trying to assure that the rentals are active. You're not just allowed to submit $500 and say, there I have, I've done it. In the city of San Luis Obispo, for instance, they require people that have rental licenses, these business licenses, this STR, to submit a page from their IRS tax forms that says, this is what I submitted. So I ask for Morro Bay to do the same in addition to what was suggested with the third-party that would be looking at it. So, thank you so much.
Hi, Walter Heath, resident of Morro Bay. You know, I'm, I'm wondering if a small but significant step toward the optimization of the process would be to fold in the cost of a business license with the cost of the STR permit? It seems like there's, there's been a little bit of a catch on people who are, you know, maybe renewing their permits without renewing their business licenses, and that kind of causes a bottleneck. And, you know, I'm just wondering how practical, you know, that might be. So I, I don't need an answer, but I'm just kind of putting it out there. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I operate a commercial STR, and I pay about $6,000 a year in TOT. Unfortunately, with the pause that's in effect, I have an additional three STR applications on hold for commercial spaces. And I just wanted to comment that the city staff has done a great job. I agree with everything. I'm just stuck in a position, I've been in a holding pattern for about a year with the additional applications, and I am commercial, I'm not residential. So I hope that you could release that pause and let us go forward. If that does happen, my calculations state about $36,000 in TOT would be paid to the city of Morro Bay. And I also want to confirm that I have licenses in San Luis Obispo, and every four years I do have to submit the scheduling from my tax return for verification, and I have no problems doing that. Thank you.
Evening, Council and staff. Barry Brannon. Nice to see that this subject has been revisited. I'm a homeowner in North Morro Bay, and on the street that I live, there's over 13, have been over 13 STRs. When this was first opened up, there was a flood of applications without due consideration. And there, as they used to say, they're cheek-to-jowl. I can take you to the corner of Easter and Beachcomber, and I think they're either three or four within a stone's throw from each other. I think this is an opportune time to review this entire subject, and the limit of 175, big, we're talking about residential, now we're talking about commercial now. 175 is way too many in this small town, and it takes away from the neighborhood. Because if you don't know who your neighbors are, it's not a really nice place to be. So I think that this subject needs to be reviewed. I don't want any more anything else. I think it should be reduced. I'd be very pleased to see it fixed at 137 in the vacation rentals. And any of the ones that are, obviously, in your review, you're going to find that there's space too close together, and hopefully, for example, at the corner of Kodiak and Beachcomber, there's two right across from street from each other. One has a permit, one is pending. I don't see how you can allow the, this to happen. And I think there's numerous other places in the map that you've shown where they're overlapped, and I think that you have to say, just because they had it, and we allowed it to go along for all this time, that you should allow it to continue. This subject should not be settled, and I'm glad to see it could happen in the future. But if anything, the, the city should not be turned over to say, oh, we have to have TOT. Citizens that live here deserve some privacy. They deserve the fact that they have homes, and they live here with family, and it shouldn't just be a, a source of revenue. We have commercial areas, commercial rentals are fine. I own commercial property, but this is totally an invasion of the public use of their property by having vacation rentals cheek-to-jowl. Thank you.
Charles Tercateri, resident of Morro Bay. I absolutely concur with what Barry just said. This has been an ongoing issue since COVID kicked down, and suddenly we have too many short-term rentals, but yet we're building hotels. We have, you know, the Rhapsody just got built. I mean, there's another quote-unquote "short-term rental" with no management in place. One of the other things that, when I noticed the websites which you're checking for those short-term rentals, please check Craigslist as well as Marketplace on Facebook. That's where I found the illegal one up in North Morro Bay. There's actually, there were two of them, because they were advertising on those platforms. As Barry said, it takes away from our neighborhood. It's like living in a brothel next door. It flips, the housekeeper comes in, then we've got another couple that are in there. They exceed the number of people, as it's supposed to be two occupants per single bedroom. I have a 500-square-foot residence next to me, and there will be three cars in the driveway and probably six people in there, because they're using a Murphy bed. So that needs to be addressed. You know, it's per bedroom, not per Murphy bed, not per blow-up mattress. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Hi, my name's Mitchell Bush. I manage a few short-term rentals in our community, and I figured I'd briefly comment on something Councilmember Landrum in Arlen spoke about. Arlen referred to operational violations, which is a concern, you know, for us as managers, a big concern for the community members and our neighbors. Ms. Landrum's right. A lot of these things that disturb our neighbors the most happen on weekends and at nighttime. And there's no record or real policy we have, or you guys have, for enforcement with police, or whether it's the fire department. As a manager, I know our official, our informal policy is to engage all of our neighbors, make sure that they have our contact information and my card. So luckily, it doesn't happen very often, but when there are instances of somebody staying in a house and partying, staying late, or, you know, past the curfew, they call us. Usually, these problems, though rare, are quickly resolved. You know, it just takes one neighbor calling me, telling me that somebody's causing a problem. I call them, tell them to be quiet, and that's that. So, so perhaps, you know, without, you know, an enforcement policy, maybe mandating that we share this contact information with the neighbors is a good way to make sure everybody's happy with these short-term rentals. So, thank you.
Over the last couple of years, my name's Jim Kornut. Over the past couple of years, I've had a non-licensed short-term rental right up the hill. At one point, there were 60 people for a meeting for the weekend. There's nobody to call, so you call the police. Police came, I mean, they were blocking mailboxes, I mean, it was a nightmare. And the policeman was kind enough, he said, they're very nice people, and he could, he did nothing. So the city needs to have a code enforcement on the weekend to get out, and, I mean, I don't care if it's the, the, you know, they work Saturday, Sunday, they'll take Monday, Tuesday off or something, but you've got to have code enforcement that can be contacted, that know the rules, and that will take care of business. Because otherwise, saying it's going to go to the police department, they have more important things to do than come out and look at a house. That's my comment.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, there are. Madam Mayor, one moment. Our first speaker is going to be Courtney. Courtney, you can speak.
Thank you.
If you're sounding good.
Okay, great. I just wanted to both compliment everyone for the work on this. This is such a difficult topic in so many communities. We used to have a second home in Lake Tahoe, and it was a very fraught discussion there as well, and different communities in Tahoe ended up passing different rules that, you know, changed quite, quite quickly over time. I think there's a lot of lessons that can be learned in terms of things that have worked and things that haven't worked in other communities. So I would encourage city staff to continue to leverage that knowledge base of other communities that are also dealing with these challenges. I wanted to also offer, you know, at the risk of a big sigh of, or a big groan from city staff, just one alternative, you know, as you think about the revenue needs of the city and increasing TOT potentially, I had this idea that I sent to CFAC after their meeting last week, which is maybe a different type of a short-term rental license, one that is more limited use, instead of being allowed to be a short-term rental 365 days a year, something that is limited to something like no more than 30 days a year. And obviously, would still have to comply with all of the same rules that we expect of the existing short-term rentals, but it would, it, it kind of bridges that desire to engage the Cal Poly community more. I have a Cal Poly graduate, I'm still connected with that parent community, and those families, for parent weekends and graduation weekends, they're always looking for places that their family can gather to celebrate this accomplishment, and they don't want to be in small hotel rooms doing that. So I don't know if, you know, in a future iteration, that's something that the city could consider, is something more limited in nature that would, would be a direct use for that engagement with the Cal Poly community and families that are looking to celebrate, you know, a big milestone and spend a lot of money in our community while they're here. So that was just one, you know, immediate option I wanted to offer, in addition to obviously needing to maintain these quality-of-life issues that come with short-term rentals.
All right, we have one more person here, one moment. Christine, you're able to speak now? Never mind, you muted yourself. Could you please unmute yourself, Christine? Your microphone is muted. Christine, can you please unmute your microphone? They are not responding on their end, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, AGP. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to Council for any follow-up questions and comments, and I will remind Council it's 9:20, and we have a 8:30 meeting.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Director Singwald, I, just in hearing the comments and everything we've talked about, I'm wondering, in the scenario, if someone had, someone had a permit and... and they had been cited, no, wait, they didn't have a permit. They were in the line to get a permit, but they had been cited for having an illegal short-term rental. Would they be able to be in line still?
Not for two years.
Oh, for two years, they're punished? Okay. And, okay, and if someone had a permit, and they didn't renew, and it turned out they were too close to someone else, is that an opportunity to fix that problem?
Yes. So if you have a permit that's within the 175-foot buffer of an existing permit, and those were both, you know, grandfathered in, and one of them doesn't renew, that means that no future, any future STR permit is not grandfathered and has to meet that buffer requirement and would not be able to be within the buffer of an existing STR.
I meant if they didn't, if they, you know, forgot to renew or said that they didn't understand or something.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So in that case, I think we would handle it the same way that I described before. And this is a very, very small number, where again, I think they had a good explanation for not receiving a renewal notice, and they were continuing to pay TOT. Then yes, if we were able to verify in good faith they thought they were operating in compliance, then we would allow them to renew even if they are in the buffer.
Okay. And have we ever considered, have you ever considered in thinking about this, that the people prepay their TOT? That they say that they're, you know, like, if they have, if we have a minimum number, if they prepay that number, and then we can deduct it from?
So my suspicion is that would not align with our current, yeah, TOT provisions of the municipal code.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, the only comment that I have is that, I did a little math here. I was under the same impression that short-term rentals deprived us of long-term rentals. I ran a list of approximately 30 short-term rentals. On Beach and Bay, you relax, VRBO, Airbnb, it's $640 a night. On Toro Lane, they're charging $1,035 a night, seven-night stay minimum. And because of the fact that our revenue is such, I am inclined to add 17 units. And I did the math from the 2023 to 2024 TOT. That would create $87,000 into our TOT account. That's all I have to say.
Are we allowed to, are we, is this a time that we could change the ordinance as well?
Well, of course, there's a, you know, very involved process to actually change the ordinance.
To modify it?
I mean, one of the options I outlined is for the council essentially to give the staff direction for future ordinance amendments. And that's not the staff recommendation, because we would like to continue this year to figure out, you know, what the baseline is and then have a more informed policy discussion at a future point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm hearing you say you're needing more time for the complacency to finish through this at the end of the year. Is that correct, before we take an action? Other than supporting or not the commercial that has no cap? That basically, that's the staff recommendation?
That is correct. And I could go into more detail on that, but I know we're getting close to, close to time, so.
Comments?
I do appreciate some of the people that came to the podium tonight. You added some, I think, ideas that I hadn't thought about before, including the Schedule E submittal. Not sure if we are able to get Craigslist information through Deckard or not. But I did see some of, somebody corresponded with us. And I also spoke to a current operator that said Craigslist can be a problem sometimes as well, and to see if we could look at it. I found it interesting with the limited youth idea. I do feel that SDRs provide a lodging choice for people, especially people coming into town, or, you know, coming to college, leaving college, you know, celebrations, things like that. You want to be with your family. And oftentimes, we're looking at, you know, these are more than two bedrooms. And, you know, back in the day, we probably did open up our two hotel rooms with the door in between. But I don't think it's so much like that now. People want to bring food and things to celebrate. So I do like the idea of choice, and that could be an option to look at down the road. I am concerned, you know, we, as per the staff report, thank you, Mr. Singwald, it was a very good one. We are already going the wrong direction here with TOT on these SDRs. I think it was like around 700K in 2024, but I know it's been progressively going, you know, down. So looking at the numbers does make me nervous ahead of following this process out, or as you refer to, getting the baseline. I want to say I appreciate your work on this. I really appreciate your fervor when talking about aggressively pursuing this. So thank you for that. I actually appreciate my colleagues. You know, when we started going into this process, I wasn't quite sure where it was going to go. And I've really appreciated the process before we touched policy. So I am for going with 1B tonight, allowing for commercial, commercial SDRs to be able to apply while sticking to what we're doing and allowing for the residential to flush out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the public who shared your comments tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Landrum, for your leadership on this issue. You bubbled this up to the top, well, right after you got elected a couple of years ago. And so we've seen activity, particularly with staff's aligned efforts. We appreciate that. I'll mention very quickly, one of my wish lists on this, I think, the third year I mentioned in it for sure, second year. And this is for next year, next calendar year. But I would, especially now that we have another person in IT, I would still love us to explore the concept of an app, a phone-based app, to manage this. And neighbors would be able to report, they'd be able to see if it was a licensed STR. I just think it would be a very efficient platform to help us manage this. I agree with Councilmember Edwards in terms of the staff recommended alternative, 1B, and that's what I'll be voting for. And, ever you're ready for a motion.
It's not a motion, it's directed.
Oh, that's easy. Thank you.
I think it's just looking for direction, and I.
I agree, too.
And I will concur with that also, with 1B and looking at the commercial. I really want to thank you. I know this has been a huge endeavor. And as Councilmember Eccles alluded, you know, when Councilmember Landrum brought this, it was a very slow progression. And since you've been on board, it's been leaps and bounds. And I look forward to getting to the place that we can support issuing new permits in residential areas. But I agree that it would be premature at this point. I'm hoping that just through the complacency that you're doing now, we're going to start recovering some of the revenue that maybe we saw was a decrease over the last year or two. I know that's, being the representative for SlowCal and, you know, seeing what's going on with the tourism, it's not just Morro Bay, it's everywhere. And so there's been a shift in, since COVID, in the vacation rentals. They do play a huge role where people are looking for families to be able to stay there. So I know we want to support it as council. I just think that right now, we're good with the commercial. And I think you got concurrence from all of us up here, so hopefully you have enough direction.
Yes, thank you. We'll see you in September with another update.
See you in September with another update. Thank you. Any, we're on recess for one month. We will be back the end of July, the second meeting in July. We have meetings the next two days with interviews, starting at 8:30 in the morning with a potential intern, with a potential in-house city attorney. And any future agenda items?
I know I don't often do this, but, and this might be redundant to my colleagues, but I see it as being critical to the public to be able to see what the work was that CFAC did. And I'm hoping to get support to have a joint CFAC council meeting with regard to revenue opportunity stream so that the public can weigh in.
I've already been in conversation with the chair from CFAC to do that, so.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.